Good evening. I'd like to call to order this special meeting, October 16th, 2012, of the Milton School Committee. And as is our custom with school committee meetings, I invite you to stand as you're able and begin with a salute to the flag. My pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Really, our only order of business tonight is to listen to you and to answer questions. And we want to get to that as quickly as we can. We've had, as I'm sure you're all aware, a number of emails and calls and so forth, and a lot of correspondence over the last few days, answering a lot of questions, and a lot of them have come up very frequently. So what we'd like to do, just at the outset here, is to answer some of the very most frequently asked questions to sort of set the table for some of the further discussion so that you can come up and ask questions from there. So we're not, we sort of take the preliminaries off the table and let people really get into some more of the issues in a little more depth. And I'll get to the format of how we'll do that in a minute, but let me just say a few things first about where we are and how we got to where we are and what our plan is or what our plan is for looking at this. First off, not everyone, as knows, we have four elementary schools. Not everyone's familiar with all the workings of all of them. Let me just say a couple of things first. Two of our elementary schools, the Glover and the Collycut, are what are called four-unit schools. They have four classrooms of each grade in them. The Cunningham and the Tucker are three-unit schools. They have three classrooms of each grade in them. So our schools are built for 14 classes of each grade. Now, as some of you may know, we currently run 15 classes in most grades. We started this a few years ago following the World Language Report, which I'll get to in a little bit, where we added a 15th classroom, some called auxiliary class, in French. And the way we do that is that some of the class, some of the school buildings have some extra rooms, but they don't have a full set of extra rooms which would allow us to put another full set of classes in them. So we rotate that extra class. We start, we started when we put an extra first grade at Cunningham one year, and those children would sort of bubble through. The Cunningham would have four classes of that particular grade as they processed through the school, and three of the other grades. And then the next year, what we added, what we'd added at a different, we'd added at the Tucker, or we'd added at the Glover. And there is a schedule built out several years in advance, because we have to know where we can put the classes, of how we are going to rotate through the various schools that allows us to sort of flex in that 15th classroom. So our basic issue is we have a capacity of 15 classrooms, and people should know that. That's where we are right now. Currently, we have 320 students in the first grade, and 15 classrooms is enough to support that. That's if you do the quick math, 21, 22, average per classroom. So there's certainly enough classrooms to have the children we have at 15. So it's a workable number. I just would point out that since we instituted that flexible class a few years ago in the first grade, it's actually been changed a little bit. We don't actually set up that class in the first grade anymore. Due to the enrollment in full-day kindergarten, we have found that we have to actually add the extra class at the kindergarten level of these schools. And so it becomes a six-year cycle through the schools instead of a five. For instance, this year, there is an extra kindergarten at Cunningham School, which is why we know that next year, the extra first-grade class will be at the Cunningham School, and those classes will rotate through Cunningham School. Next year, an extra kindergarten would have to be at a different school. So it's the same model, it's just been sort of pushed back to kindergarten. And that actually has some bearing on some of the decisions that are in the superintendent's plan, the fact that that rotation actually starts at kindergarten. So we'll come back to that. The most common question, of course, is, you know, why can't everyone who wants French just have French, and everyone who wants English just have English? Which is what we've done essentially for 25 years. And there are a variety of different reasons for it. First off, just to digress a little bit, some of you may remember that there was a ballot petition about 10 years ago in 2002, dealing with bilingual education. What we used to do in classes for English language learners was you would have classes set up with bilingual teachers who would teach them in their native language while teaching them English at the same time. And at that point, there was some controversy over whether these were actually working, whether students were staying in bilingual classes for a long time and never achieving English really fluency. And there was actually an initiative petition at the time to eliminate bilingual education. The legislature stepped in at that point and basically rewrote the English language learner statute, which is Chapter 71A of the Mass General Laws. And that actually affects what we're, their rewrite of it affects our responsibilities here. A couple of pieces. We have students who are classified as English language learners. Their native language is not English. Those students, per the changes in that law, are required to be educated in English. There is only a limited amount of bilingual classes anymore that are allowed. You have to be phased through very quickly. These children are supposed to be mainstreamed into English classes as quickly as possible. They're supposed to be mainstreamed into English classes that also have native English speakers in them. They can't be mainstreamed into a class by themselves just to learn English. It has to be in the mainstream. So that gives us a requirement that a certain amount of English has to be taught, because we have to have classes into which we can put English language learners, and we do have them. The second outcome of that change in the law was it designated that English is the language of instruction in Massachusetts, and that anyone who wants their child educated in English has an absolute right to have their child educated in English in Massachusetts. So anyone who requests English as a, as an option in the first grade has to have that request granted. We can't cap the English and say, we have only so many seats in English, you're going to have to go into French. That's not permitted under Massachusetts law. Massachusetts has designated that English is the language of instruction for Massachusetts. And basically, you have to opt out of it. So that's another class of people that we have to be able to serve with English classrooms. The third class that we also have to serve are certain students with special needs. And this has gotten, you know, a lot of conversation of late. And I would just point out that it's a, it's a very delicate subject on all of this. When I say, you know, a student with special needs, if you have a picture in your head of what that is, then you're wrong. Because the children with special needs run the gamut from anything, from a child with minor dyslexia through a child who has to be educated in a hospital setting because they have major health issues. I mean, the notion of special education is an enormous range of students. And it could take the form of students who have, who are, fall under the Special Education statute and have individual education plans. It could take the form of students who don't qualify under the Special Education statute but under the Americans with Disabilities Act and have what are called 504 plans. Those students collectively account for one out of seven students in the Milton Public Schools. The special ed students, when you call them, you've heard of special ed students, they're your neighbors, they're the kids that your kids are playing with if they aren't your kids. They, you just don't know who they are, because in most cases, special education is an invisible attribute. And it is our duty and our preference to keep it that way. I mean, that is the right thing to do. So when people talk about those special education kids, I urge you to be a little careful about how you're doing that, because, you know, chances are, you know, they are very near you, or their parents are very near you, because they are throughout the system. One out of seven is fairly standard across the state. This is not unusual a number of students. In fact, it tends to be higher in more affluent communities, because it, parents in more affluent communities tend to not let their children fall through the cracks, and tend to know what their rights are, and tend to take advantage of things that they, that are accessible to them. So they're, they're more on watch about what, about what their rights are. So, now, under the Special Education statute, these children as well have to be educated in the least restrictive environment. The days of the special class that, you know, I grew up in my era, which was more warehousing than education, are gone. These students have to be integrated into regular education as much as is possible. All right? And that's an obligation as well. As I say, and that also adds a certain number of places where we have to serve students. And if you think about it at the first-grade level, if you have a six-year-old who has been diagnosed with some sort of learning disability, chances are it's language-based, because we don't check for too much else, we don't test them in physics at sixth grade. Their, language is what we're looking at at sixth grade. So chances are it's language-based. Six, six-years-old, sorry. We do test them in physics at sixth grade, sorry. That's the MCAS. Six years old. So, some of our students with special needs are in the French program, but many are not. The majority are not, to be honest. Because, again, special ed, the individual ed plan and the 504 plan are contracts between the parents and the school system as to what's in the best interest of those children and what we need to do to serve those children. And again, what I said previously falls into play. If a parent wants their child in English, we have to give them instruction in English. So there are several classes of people for whom we have to have English language instruction, and all of them fall into the category of having to be in mixed instruction classrooms. They have to be in with, in the case of English language learners, native speakers; in the case of special education students, not substantially separate special education classes, but integrated into classes with non-special education students. That gives us a legal mandate to offer a certain amount of English. We can talk about what that amount is, but there is an amount, period, that we have to offer. The fact that we have an amount that we have to offer, and we have only so many classrooms to service children in, means there has always been, de facto, a limit on our amount of French we could offer, because there are only so many seats. The issue is, of course, we've never had to deal with that, because we've never had the popularity of the French program to such an extent that it impinged on the ability for us to hold those English classrooms. That started to creep up on us about four years ago, when we saw some of the trends. And that was the genesis of the World, one of the genesises, if that's a word, of the World Language Committee, was to look at, what are the trends in enrollment in French? How are we going to deal with them, and so forth? At the time, we weren't up against what we thought was the absolute edge of our ability to offer French. The World Language Committee came back with the proposal for the auxiliary classroom, still allowing everyone who wanted French to get into French, but coming up with a proposal whereby we could schedule all those people, putting in the auxiliary classroom, instituting the lottery for who would be able to stay in their home school versus who would be able, who would need to move into whatever school the auxiliary class was going to be in that year. And that was the, that particular process was an outgrowth of that. Since then, we have actually seen a little more growth in French, to the point where this year, this past spring, when 66 percent of incoming first graders, their parents chose French on their behalf. That made a very difficult situation for us in terms of being able to fill the necessary English classes that we had to fill. In fact, it only really resolved itself because we closed off enrollment in French in June, and the 20 or so students who came into our district over the summer were all placed in English, and we sort of managed to get the English classes to a more reasonable level that way. But had we not had 20 incoming students over the summer, and had we not placed them all in English, we would have had even more serious issues with the distribution of the two, of the two programs. So that's basically where we got to where we are right now. One other thing that I just wanted to mention, people have mentioned the co-talk classroom or classrooms, and some grades there are one, and some grades there are two. I would just point out, again, based on what I said before, the co-talk classroom, contrary to what might be the perception, is not a special education classroom. It is a regular classroom. It has the same curriculum as either the French or the English classroom has. It just has a different delivery model. The delivery model is it has roughly eight students with special needs who might have trouble in the standard model, roughly nine or so students without special needs, more than the special needs students, who are specifically chosen to be in there as the quote-unquote role models. And it has two teachers full-time in the room, differentiating instruction for all the kids in that classroom. And it's just a different delivery model that's intended to help with the education of those students. The, it is the first grade or whatever grade class of the English students every bit as much as it is the first grade class of the special needs students. They are their teachers combined jointly for everyone in that room. And it is just another delivery method on a classroom. It is one of our classrooms in the first grade. So when we talk about, you know, special ed students, we're not just talking about the eight or so of them in the co-talk classroom. They are distributed throughout our system, and that co-talk classroom is just, again, one method of delivery of instruction to a group of students. But it is not the case that that is, as some have suggested, a special ed classroom with sort of visiting regular education students. They are in that classroom full-time, it is their classroom too. So I just wanted to get that out, because a few people had asked about that. That is just what I wanted to lead off with in terms of some of where we are and how we got to here. Superintendent Gormley, do you want to add anything else before we get underway?
I think if we hear from the parents and guardians, and then we'll expand on any issue that they want to detail on.
Fine. All right. The format I'm proposing that we use is this. I want to give as many people as possible the ability to speak, to say what they want to say, to ask questions, and to get questions answered. However, I don't want to get involved in debate back and forth between one person at the microphone and one or more people at this table, because that just deprives other people of the chance to ask the question that they want to ask. So what we're going to do is this, we've got a couple microphones set up here, we've got a couple front rows set aside for people who want to come up and see, sort of line up in seats. What I'm going to do is recognize six or eight people alternating microphones. We'll write down what you say, we'll make notes of your questions. When I do six or eight people, we'll stop, we'll answer your questions, to the best that we can answer your questions up here. Then we'll continue and bring another six or eight people up, and we'll go back and forth that way. We'll try to make every effort to get as many questions answered as we possibly can, but again, we're trying not to engage in debate up here at the microphone. If you ask a question, we answer it, and you have a follow-up question, feel free to join the line again. But really, we really don't want to get into back and forth, because it just takes time away from other people, and I am sure there are plenty of people who want to ask questions or be heard. So that's how we're going to go. We're also going to try to limit the time. Again, there are a fair number of people in here, we don't want to be here till 3:00 AM. None of us do. I've asked Ms. Sheridan here to have a small timer. We're going to try to limit people to three minutes to say your piece, to ask a question. Just a couple pieces. I know a lot of people like to punctuate their story, their, their point with stories about their children. This is a public meeting, it's, it's on TV, it's being recorded. Your child is five or six years old and may not mind what you're saying about them tonight, but envision them as 13 years old and sitting next to you and watching it on YouTube, and wondering if, really, did you say that, Mom, in public? So I just, when you're, when you're telling stories about your children, I just would ask that you keep that in mind. You know, videotapes aren't quite, well, CDs aren't quite forever, but they're pretty close. And this stuff will probably live on the internet for longer than any of us care to have it. So I would just warn that when you start talking too much about personal situations of your children. And I do recognize that, you know, we are talking about our children, and we get passionate about our children, but I urge everyone to try to remain as civil as possible about this, and be very careful about saying things that although are not meant to, can very easily, unintentionally hurt somebody. We are talking not only about our children, but other people's children, and it's very delicate when you are talking about other people's children, even more so when you're talking about yours. So I just urge people to, you know, watch, watch it a little bit, because there have been some things said, you know, the internet is terrible for this, it is possible to say anything over the internet, because it's, there's a certain amount of anonymity to it, even if it's not anonymous, you're not facing the person you're speaking to. I urge you to just take it a little slower, and we're all in the same room here, and we will try to deal with anything we come up with. The only other thing I would ask is, when you come up and speak, this, it is citizen speak, I ask you to give your name and address, because that's part of our citizen speak process. I would also ask you, for the sake of our recording secretary over here, there is a pad on her desk and a pad on our desk, the piano up here. I would ask, after you speak, you just write your name down, so we have it spelled right for the record. You know, as you come up, after you're done, just walk past here and write your name down, and go back down. Because it is all, we had, this is a school committee meeting, we have to keep minutes. This is all part of the official record of the minutes, and for better or for worse, we'd like to spell your name right. So, with that, anything else from the table, or shall we go? All right. I would, you said there was, yes. I'll start by, if you'll just come down to the front as you want to speak, I'll start by recognizing over here. Sir, you may start.
Thank you very much. My name is Bob Tamkin, 372 Hillside Street. I'm here to represent and speak on behalf of my neighbor and friend Ralph Jaeger, 188 Hillside Street, who could not be with us tonight. This is his statement. Dear Superintendent Gormley, members of the school committee, and meeting attendees, my wife and I moved to Milton four years ago to give our children the opportunity of the French immersion program. The program is a beacon for Milton, which shines far beyond the borders of Massachusetts. I have been an advocate for the program, convincing several families over the past year to move to Milton to benefit from the outstanding educational choice that our town offers. So many of us deliberately bought a house in Milton to have access to the French immersion program. And now, all of our lives are affected by the idea, I'm sorry, by the idea of capping the program. Instead of recognizing the program's success and trying to find creative solutions to further develop our town's competitive advantage, we propose to cut the branch on which we sit. Let us not introduce scarcity of value for a good to which everyone should have access. I left Europe five years ago because I saw firsthand the demise of the European educational system. Fewer and fewer choices, an increasingly mediocre curriculum, and the absence of educational stimulation have had disastrous consequences for communities in Europe. We can do better than Europe. Let us give our children a better education with more choices and more stimulation. Let us find a good, long-term solution to address the issues that have led to the proposal of the cap. However, if in the end, we fail to come up with a creative solution to prevent the cap, then we should at least accommodate all of the families who have planned their lives around giving all of their children access to French immersion. I hope that you will consider rejecting the cap, but I also hope that you will at least include a staged grandfathering approach that accommodates younger siblings of students who are now enrolled. Thank you, Ralph Jaeger.
Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Gormley, Chairman Pavlichek. My name is Pat McNott, I live on Herrick Drive, and I'm a former school committee member. So I also have a passion for school committee members and in administration that are dealing with a very difficult problem, which, by the way, you have enunciated perfectly. I am here to ask you not to take the wisdom of Solomon and cut the baby in half. What I'm asking you to do is what you're capable of doing, put into place another special program that is augmentating the English program. We have exceptional students in the English program, exceptional teachers, so the emphasis should never be on French immersion as it has become. I am saying with this administration, with your careful thinking and your certain dedication, we can arrive at a resolution that keeps French immersion in place, and there'll be enough people who'll choose something else to make this problem go away. I wish you luck, and thanks for the time.
Hi, my name is Craig Wright, 33 Buckingham Road, in Milton, obviously. Just a couple, more of a couple open-ended kind of questions that I would like to pose and to think about, is, you spoke about the law today, which was interesting, that was not in the presentation, that was online, so helpful information, but curious as to what the law suggests in a different approach of making, having parents make decisions a little bit closer at starting kindergarten, with the understanding that there are these two distinct paths in the Milton Public School System, and then if they choose to change their mind later, perhaps there is some sort of a cap slash lottery system if they've changed their mind? Just making the decision a little bit earlier so you can plan for human resources accordingly, as opposed to making it halfway through or at the end of a kindergarten year? That's question number one. Number two was the grandfather clause, and I echo both, both previous speakers on the grandfather clause, because essentially, you know, I feel that you're taking an opportunity away from my children to potentially bond in teaching each other a different language in my, in my home. Third of all, you know, there's this, this concept of a STEM program, and if you go out into the Milton Public School System, there's really not a lot there about it. Everything is all focused on French immersion. I'm confident that if you market it, and if you had a really good program in the traditional English that was marketed and, and demand was created, I'm sure that there's a lot of people in here that would really struggle with the decision, as opposed to just automatically going to the French, because that's where the public relations and the marketing, not from you folks, but from Money Magazine on down to town, local, state, et cetera. I'm curious as to whether or not you've thought about property values as a whole for this town. I fear that capping this program may in fact implicate people who aren't even in this room tonight, and people who've had kids go through the system already from a property value, which will lower our taxes, which will lower our public spending. And then, last, last but not least, I'm curious if you've thought about, is it misleading to just make the assumption that if a student is not lucky enough, or lucky enough is a bad word, but if it's not, if the student does not make the lottery and is not implemented in the French system, is it misleading to assume that that, that student is automatically going to stay in the English public school system, and you're losing students as well? Thank you.
Okay, sorry, Christine Howley, 30 Center Lane. I think there have been many victims these past few weeks during this debate. I believe that our English teachers should be counted among that, and we have phenomenal teachers in the English program, and I believe many parents and childrens owe them a debt of gratitude. And I'd like to say that there's a lot of information that is misleading and wrong about the English program, and it would be nice if people actually took the time to investigate before they made assumptions. And thank you to our teachers.
I just want to say, I'm reminding people to please sign your name after you speak, so that we can have it for our public record. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Emily Speck, I live at 84 Beacon Street Circle. A lot of what I have come to say tonight, I've already emailed to most of the people sitting up here. But I have to say that, as many people in this town, I moved to this town partially because of the French immersion program. I came here after having taught in a French-speaking country- country in West Africa, having lived in France for a year, having visited French countries on three different continents. French is a really important language to our family, and we do want our children to partake in this program. However, I'm also a teacher and an educator, and those laws that they spoke to at the beginning of this program are really important for all of the children in this town. And so, despite my hope that my children will get the opportunity to be in the French program, I really support the superintendent and the school committee's need to cap the program in such a way that allows every student in this school system to get the education they need. However, that being said, although I support the cap, when it was first presented, I really had some issues with the, with the original plan for the implementation. As it is currently designed, the program is not equitable to all the parents who would want to choose the French program. And as such, I think that there needs to be modifications of the cap if it's going to be implemented. My, my concerns are that because of spatial limitations, and those are real limitations, they can't offer the same percentage of seats for students choosing the French program in each of the schools. That means if you have a school-based lottery system, some people will get an unfair advantage just because of the number of seats that are available in that school. My original suggestion to the school committee was a district-based lottery, which creates its own issues in terms of making sure that there are, that it's feasible to make the classes within a school that they need to make. So I have suggested to the school committee, and I want to suggest to the community, that in order to make a more feasible and more equitable lottery system, that they consider partnering schools. So partnering the Cunningham and the Colacott, and the Tucker and the Glover, in such a way that all students in that partner system, if they chose to apply to French immersion, they would be upfront saying, I am willing to have my child go to either school in this partner school. And then if they got in the French lottery, they would be placed in one of the French classes in that program. If they didn't, they would get placed in one of the English classes in one of those two schools. And that would at least make the system a little bit more equitable. I think it's also really important that right now Tucker has slated to have only 37% of their first grade students eligible for French immersion. This is the school in our district that is the only Title I school, which means it has the highest percentage of low-income students. It is also the only, it has 54% minority students, which is a much higher percentage than any other school in the district. I am not a minority. I am not low-income, although I grew up as a low-income individual. This is not about my children. This is about all of our children. It is not fair that this program should be offered less to certain populations in our town because of spatial limitations. It's very important that we don't take one civil liberty problem, which is making sure that we have the ability to, to serve our IEP students as is legally and morally mandated, with another civil liberty problem, which is to lower the, the access to an amazing program for students of minority and low-income, because they do not have as many opportunities in the school that houses that population primarily in Milton. So, those are my concerns. I also hope that those populations can be better represented in the French program by better outreach and better communication with those families, so that they know what the opportunity is, they understand it, and they are making a educated choice. Because as the medical community knows, there's consent, and there's informed consent. And no parent who doesn't have the full information about those programs can be said to have chose English if they don't have informed consent and understand the program, how it works, and why it might or might not benefit their child. So I think that's an important aspect of this cap that needs to be included, is outreach to families who are underrepresented in French, to make sure that they have the information they need to make an informed decision about the programs. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Colleen Woods. I live at 1793 Canton Avenue. We, as many of the parents here, moved to town partially because of the French program. We just moved here last year. My first son is in the first grade class at Glover, taking French right now. I have two other children who will be impacted potentially by the decision that you're looking to make. And so, you know, my hope is that I don't have to make a decision for my children through this process of deciding whether I need to put them into a different school to have parity in terms of the kind of education that my children get, and that they all get access to additional language. I work for a company where we operate in 30 countries and 21 languages. It is a gift to be able to have access to another language. I have absolutely no interest in French personally. My husband is Finnish. He speaks Finnish at home with our children. But the potential to learn additional languages is a gift that Milton has been able to give for 25 years. And I feel, there's been a lot of talk about the elitist mentality of some of the families in the French program. And I feel that it will become even more so when you have a have-and-have-not population, when there's a certain percentage of students who will be, like, have the door closed just in front of them before they get into a program, that their parents would like them to be in, that they are excited about because their siblings have been through it. And I think that that's going to create a tremendous problem. I also hope that, you know, what we're saying here tonight really impacts the way that you think about, you know, the decision you're going to make tomorrow. Because I, I would hate the idea that, you know, we come here before you with heartfelt words, and, you know, the best wisdom we have as parents, and that you've already made your decisions. Because that feels inequitable. I would like to also say, I agree with many of the parents about the housing values. I do think that it is an issue for Milton if the program is capped or limited, because I was willing to pay a lot more in taxes, and my child went to a private school in Salem because the schools were so bad there that I wouldn't even take him to those schools. So, I was willing to pay three times more in taxes in my home to come here to be in access to this program. So, that's another thing. I'd also like to say that I have heard nothing bad about the English teachers or the English program. So, I feel like there's been some chatter on Facebook about that the English program has been sort of represented as inadequate. And I don't feel coming into the town that I had a notion of that, or that there's been any talk of that among the parents in the community. So, I just think, you know, I, I hope that you're able to find a way to accommodate everyone as best as possible. And if there is no option, I would ask that, one, you know, bring a Prop Two override to the table. Who said we can't get more money on the table to do whatever you need for the schools? I'm willing to pay for it. And secondly, I'd like to also just say that having two additional children, I would also hope that you do have some consideration for parents who already have children in the school system, to be able to have all their kids go through the program together. Thank you.
... model regarding Tucker and Cunningham kind of being in the 37% range, and the other two schools kind of having more of a 54% if you weighted according to the 26-22 class size. So I think that question needs to be answered as well. I think the other kind of concern I have with the lottery system, as it relates to one of the goals, which was related to having more role model students in the English class, is I think that makes a basic assumption that students, and I think it's an accurate assumption, that students who are in the, who would apply for French, would automatically, if not chosen for French, become role models for those other students. I think that's an assumption, and not necessarily an accurate assumption, that the students in the French, I think it kind of creates this illusion that those students are better behaved in school, better at learning, more accomplished at learning. And I think that's a really poor assumption to make. And based on the idea that this is a lottery system where it's random, you really do not have control over the students who aren't chosen going into those English classes as role models. And I think that's something very important, because if that is one of the goals, we really aren't addressing that. We're kind of relying on chance in order to address that, hoping that it ends up right. And I think that's something that really needs to be looked at.
Over here. I don't know who's next. It's hard to tell.
My name is Jessica Lane, 37 Randolph Ave. And I've spoken before. I have five children, grades one, three, five, seven, and eight, in Milton Public Schools. My three older children are role models in a CoTAC classroom. And this is more about doing the right thing than housing values. I read something this morning about those parents who choose English are irresponsible, because it's a superior program. And that couldn't be any further from the truth. I don't need to get into specifics, but if I wanted to sit down with you and go over grades and scores, I'm sure you'd see that my children are right up there with the top peers of their age group in the French classes. And I, at some point, I really don't care about grades, because I have five wonderful, lovely, empathetic children.
Yeah, I'll take one more on each side. I'll take one more on each side, then we'll start answering a few questions, and then we'll go from here.
Hi, my name is Mary Ann Rull. I live at 58 Buckingham Road. My children are in the French immersion program at the Cunningham School. For the past few years, I've been involved with the Cunningham PTO, and I was a parent representative of the 2010 World Language Committee. In addition, I was a co-chair of the last override campaign, which successfully passed and ensured necessary funding for fiscal year 2010. These experiences have helped me to better understand the scope of the issues concerning the elementary schools. Particularly, I have learned that there are no easy solutions, and no decisions are made without great forethought. I strongly disagree with the message of the Facebook group, Save Milton French Immersion, and the Concerned Parents for French Immersion. It is essential that the superintendent and the school committee institute a cap for French immersion, in order to maintain the stability of the system. In the past few years, the choice of French has increased to a point of imbalance, not because most families view learning French as critical, but because many have selected against English due to misconceptions in budget cuts. After last year's budget presentation, which recommended the elimination of a grade-two English class at both the Cunningham and Glover schools, in each school, the selection of kindergarten, the selection by kindergarten parents spiked to 60% in favor of French. This is not a choice for French, but rather a choice against English. In response to the grade-one assignment plan presented by Ms. Gormly, I support a fixed number of English classes in French classes across the district. Keeping the structure of two English classes at all schools will eliminate single strands, reduce teacher reassignments, and encourage a strong pool of role models to well support the environments of the CoTAC classrooms. Creating this structure will allow the school administration to continue offering the choice of options for those families who are lucky enough to make the choice for their families, for their children, excuse me. Having 182 seats at four schools across the district should certainly allow for every family to have adequate choice for the French program, if that is the right choice for their child. The plan states for a possibility of a seventh classroom if population, if population in demand requires it. It is inefficient to make staffing changes annually due to an uncertain number of students enrolling in the French program each year. Also, it is not easy to find qualified, fluent, French-speaking elementary school teachers. Native speakers have been preferred, who are willing to teach 26 students, who also meet the high expectations of the teachers who teach in our school system. Having a cap for the program allows the school administration to manage its staffing needs and the school structure. Historically, the selection has been close to a 50-50 split. Only in recent years, due to budget cuts and increased enrollment, has the balance shifted to French. Many families question why Milton offers French as the immersion language, instead of a more marketable language such as Spanish, Chinese, or an Arabic dialect. Other families question why enroll a child in a foreign language program when the parents cannot be of assistance with homework. Some question why enroll a child in French and sit them in a classroom at age six where they will not understand a single thing the teacher is saying. Still others question why any immersion program is offered, as English is spoken throughout the world. A better understanding of the strengths and weaknesses of each program will hopefully encourage families to choose based on the merit of each program and what is right for their child. I would like to request that the school committee and the school administration commit to smaller English classes, a goal of 20 students, not to exceed 22, because smaller classes are educationally beneficial. French classes should allow for up to 26 students. Smaller class sizes, consistent class structure in each school, and the STEM program will optimistically encourage more families to choose English and not against it. It is imperative that all families recognize the strength of the English program. It is not the second-best option. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jerry Viti, 15 Longwood Road. She's always interrupting.
I'm Aaron Viti.
Some of you may know me as the chair of the Milton Parent Advisory Council, Special Ed Advocacy Group. You may have heard my name over the last couple of weeks. And we've been active in, in working on this issue on behalf of all children. The Viti family is a French, English, Special Ed, role model, private school family. So we are the UN of school programs. All right. So we are really for all the programs. We would not be here if we weren't. We have a daughter, Francesca, who is a special needs student. And it is for her that we're, we're here to, to talk about. We are both heartbroken over some of the language that has been used to describe kids with special needs. Inferior, less capable, it's, it's just been less deserving, not normal. And we just decry that language. And we decry the silence of some folks who have not got up and, and railed against that, that type of hateful speak. Francesca's all set in terms of her programming. So, we're not here to talk, advocate on behalf of one particular kid, or any, but on behalf of a whole group of kids who need our help now, and who are going to need our help in the future. At, I think this is important to say, and I've never said this in a public forum, but at three and a half months old, she was the 13th person in the world diagnosed with her chromosomal deletion. She didn't have a choice. We didn't have a choice. And her siblings didn't have a choice. But what we did is, we got to work, and we found out that she has a will, second to none. And she's worked at every, at everything she's accomplished. And she's a role model. She's a role model for everyone. Not just, not just the kids in the school, but anybody who's looking for an example of, of a person who's been an overachiever, and has, has done more with her life than we ever could have expected. So, okay?
I'm fine.
So, we wouldn't trade her for the world. But we didn't choose this either. And we couldn't have done it alone. The Milton school system has been our partner for the last almost eight years in helping her reach her potential. And we want to thank everybody in this room who supported all three programs, and who want to support a robust French, English, and special education program for all of our kids. I just would remind folks that this is a public school, and it's not only our legal obligation to help these kids and stand up for these kids, but it's a moral obligation as well. Thank you very much.
All right. Well, we're going to pause here and see if we can answer some of the questions that have been answered, that have been asked. I first just want to apologize. I neglected to mention STEM in my opening remarks. We have incorporated the new science, technology, engineering, math curriculum into the English program this fall. My children are considerably older. I haven't had one in kindergarten for 16 years. So I didn't know firsthand how it was going. So I didn't know firsthand how it was going, but I've been talking, the last couple of weeks, I've been talking via email, at least, to a lot of people, surprisingly. And I do hear very good things about this initial, about the STEM program, which is amazing considering it's only been here for six weeks. It is, I think it is everybody's hope, that that program serves as a real choice for people so they don't feel that it's French or vanilla somehow, that, you know, that there is something special in each. Granted, that's not the case, but it is an unfortunate perception at the moment. And so if the STEM program, and just to put a few numbers on it, if the STEM program were to have been in place and people knew it was in place for this year, and 20 people chose English instead of French, we wouldn't be here tonight. We wouldn't be up against the kind of wall we're up against right now. We're, you know, we're at the edge right now. It doesn't take too much to pull back from it. And if this program is successful and contributes to a sort of resurgence of the English program, that will handle a lot of what we are working on here tonight. The issue, of course, is, from our perspective, the six of us who are elected to sit up here and the others who are hired to sit up here, is, of course, the obvious question of what if it doesn't? And for us to have, to reach next spring without a position in case it doesn't work wouldn't be, would be a dereliction of our duty as well. So, I mean, we've reached the edge, you know, this year. We're hoping that STEM will pull us back from it, but we do have, we do recognize the fact that, you know, if it should not, we need to know what we're going to do, and we don't want to tell people after they've chosen for first grade next spring that, oh, by the way, we don't have sufficient seats in French, and even though we told you, these were the rules, we're going to have to change them. That would be far worse than anything we'd be discussing tonight. So that's my opening for just saying, my fault, I should have mentioned STEM earlier on. Ms. Gormley, you want to pick in on a couple of these?
A few issues. First of all, it came up about the issue about role models. So about a decade ago, the prior superintendent brought the idea to the school committee and to the town to create co-taught classrooms. Mr. Pavlicek did an outstanding job, and I've spoken to several parents who didn't realize there were two teachers in the classroom. You're consumers. We have amazing children, we have phenomenal teachers, and we have a parent base that really finishes out the school district, obviously all of you here tonight advocating. And so you're consumers, and you know, and you make smart choices. This co-taught program was going to begin at the Glover in grades K-1, 2. It's now at the Glover and Tucker, kindergarten through grade 5, flourishing. Two teachers and children with individual educational plans. Now, in, we have two English classrooms at the Tucker, two English classrooms at the Glover. And when the model was implemented, we were in this very auditorium with lots of issues from parents just like yourselves. And the premise was presented that children from the regular-ed classrooms would rotate in during their six-year career, through kindergarten through fifth grade. What happened was, when the enrollment at the Glover in the English program became so small, several children from the regular ed had to rotate in as role models, maybe four years out of their six years. We presented the program that we would have enough children in the English program at the Tucker and the Glover to rotate the role models in and out of the co-taught program. So, again, the role models are children from regular ed, and the principals make those assignments. I'll tell you that we've come so far that parents request their children to be role models. A lot of parents request their children to be role models even more than one time. But we need enough children in the English program to have both of those programs flourish. And Mr. Pavlicek mentioned that last summer, the enrollment in the English programs across town was really low. I would tell you to the point that I was talking to the school committee, thinking of having to identify or contact parents at the Colly Court or the Cunningham or the Tucker to have them move to the Glover so that we could have both programs flourish. And we watched the enrollment every day. We can't be responsible, I can't be responsible, and run the school system effectively waiting to see who's going to move into the district. I would also tell you that at the Cunningham School, we have two outstanding, substantially separate, special education programs. One for children with emotional issues and another for children who are developmentally delayed. And I have to tell you that these programs make us what we are, just like the French immersion and the English. These children are staying in their home district. They're not having to get on buses to go out of the district to private placements. Parents want their children in the Milton Public Schools. Again, they're consumers. They can go out and see private placements, they choose the public schools. These programs are flourishing. At the Cunningham, these two different, these two groups of children with very different needs are included in the regular classrooms. They begin to be included for art, music, library, and physical education, and then for one of the groups, they're actually included for math and language arts, increasing amount of time through their school career. So that you really need two strands of English to integrate these children. What happened at the Cunningham is we had one very small population of children in the English last year, when the French was at 66%, and this year, the Cunningham children in the Colly Court, two first grades, are integrated. The parents have met it, the teachers are bending over backwards, but if you're a Cunningham resident and you want English, you should be able to go to the Cunningham School. The Cunningham School should have its own identity, it should have an English program. And these two programs are housed at the Cunningham School, and when we go over all of these issues about integration and inclusion, we have to have these programs, and we have to have them fully enrolled. And so, to the gentleman who spoke about role models, the role models at the Glover and Tucker really rotate in and out at the principal's discretion, and some parents request that their child be a role model. Somebody spoke about the percentage at the Tucker and the Cunningham. And it's also to timing. Mr. Pavlicek spoke to, two years ago, the French, the World Language Study Committee. And then last year, when the number 66% of parents choosing French immersion. And so we spent, as a leadership team, the principal's central office, a tremendous amount of time, and people have asked about timing. We looked at every plan, we looked at all French schools, we looked at the continuum. And I have to tell you, the two programs, the two lotteries that we came down to, the two ideas, one was to actually, to the prior speaker's suggestion, make the Colly Court Cunningham, to have each of the four schools have a French class of 26 children. And then, to the speaker's point, share the Colly Court Cunningham, the Colly Court Second Class, proportionately divide those between the Colly Court and Cunningham with the percentage of children who wanted French immersion, and the same with the Tucker and Glover, or the proposal we came up with. And we felt that homeschool really drove people's choice. So we understand 50% as opposed to 33.5%, but we stayed with people wanting their homeschools. It's been proven over and over again since the beginning of French immersion and as long as we've been in the Milton Public Schools, the power of the homeschool, and families wanting their children in the homeschool. So we were very conscious of that, and when we go over the steps of the lottery and the capping, you know, after the school-wide cap, hypothetically, if at one school, we had seats, we didn't fill that school to 26. First, the primary goal is to have enough students in our English program at each of our schools. And then we would look at our four schools, and we would have a town-wide lottery to fill those seats, if in fact, we had open seats at any school. But to the speaker's point and other individuals who have written, it really came down to those two, the shared idea, we're going with the homeschool, and we went with the homeschool idea. The role models and the STEM. Mr. Pavlicek mentioned, we have teamed with Tufts University, and we have our teachers went for professional development this summer. Our science director is co-teaching with our first-grade teachers. I would tell you, Mr. Phelan and I did a learning walk with all of our principals today. We go to a different school every month, we go into different classes, and we have discussions before and after, and we had the pleasure of seeing one of those co-taught, one of the STEM classes in one of the English first grades today. And so, to one of the speaker's point, we have been piloting, we have been rolling it out in our English first grades, and I know at the Colly Court Cunningham newsletters, they've started to discuss the STEM program, and we'll start to share the successes of that program during the school year. We've concentrated our efforts into really its implementation, giving our teachers the professional development. But I would tell you that my reaction today was, when I went in to see the students in the STEM program, it gave students an opportunity who perhaps the paper and pencil activity in science, they would not have been able to prove or to demonstrate what they knew. So it's gotten off to a phenomenal beginning, and we will share its successes.
Why don't we come back and get some more comments and questions from the audience? Back over here.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Eberhart. I live at 18 Stanton Road. I did not move to Milton for French immersion. I moved to Milton because it's seven miles from Boston Medical Center, where my husband works, and we thought this would be a great community to raise our family and have an easy commute. I'm a Milton Public School parent. You can guess for yourselves what program my children belong to, but I belong to the Milton Public Schools. And I hope someday my children look me up on YouTube, and I hope they know that I stood and supported all children in the Milton Public Schools and their parents, because that has been my goal and my mission since the day I moved to this community. And I have news for all of you who think that somehow a community is defined by the program you put your children in in the first grade. I moved to Milton 13 years ago. 13 years ago, I knew not a single person in this town, not one person. I cannot walk from Stanton Road to Town Hall without running into at least six people that I know now. Milton is a community of caring, loving, giving people. It's not about what program you choose in the first grade for your children, it's about the people that will be there for you when you need them, who will come and run in a race, support children and their families who have suffered a terrible loss. When you get sick and you need someone to drive you to the hospital, those friends will be there for you. Milton is a community of caring, loving people who raised their children here, those children come back, and guess what? They teach at the high school. I want you to keep that in mind. House values, property values, all of those things are not tied to French immersion. They are tied to all of you and the attitude that you project to the rest of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I am very proud of my children, and when my son graduates this June, along with several children of these people sitting here at this table, I couldn't be any prouder. Thank you.
Could I say anything? Mr. Plunkett? If I might, I promise we'll stay right to this format, and I'll get this down pat. One note that's really important. When individuals have been writing and calling, two issues are sibling preference in children who are in private kindergartens. As a public school district with the sibling preference, and again, we have heard from parents, we have heard loud and clear, we understand about the timing of this, but as a public school district at the Tucker, 19 of the current, 19 of the children in the current kindergarten have siblings who are in the French immersion. And so we went over all of these numbers when we were coming up with our recommendations. So we've heard you, the school committee is going to hear tonight about the issues of siblings, the issue of those of you who this year are just finding out about the capping and the lottery proposal, and then the other issue, children who are in private kindergartens and people who have older siblings with us. And Mr. Pavlicek described, and Mr. Phelan does a great job explaining it, we have the four kindergartens at the Colly Court and the Glover, and the three kindergartens at the Tucker and Cunningham. And that's the planning that we do as a district. So we have to move those children ahead and, again, provide, looking at two French, two English, two English, one French, and that's how we do our planning. And those of you who are familiar with the Tied Lottery, and then after those children are placed, we place children who have been in private kindergartens. So the premise of the proposal was, as I said, one, we're a public school district, and making the proposal to have just one example, we have the numbers at each of the schools, that would only leave seven seats at the entire Tucker for children who weren't siblings. And again, the private kindergarteners, we, a father said to me today, we should be finding out how many private kindergarteners there are out there, and, but then you'd have to find out whether they're going into English or French, but we're providing for moving the district ahead, and then we have historically known how many children, on average, come in from private kindergartens. And with our full-day kindergarten, that number has decreased.
Hello, my name is JP Plunkett from 1 Ruggles Lane, and I'm not against the French program at all, but I am just going to be very honest, I'm unabashedly pro-cap. And I think Mr. Pavlicek made a point that everybody here is failing to keep in mind, and I didn't think about it until tonight, we might be worrying about nothing. You know, this is all in case, and I have a funny feeling that nature could sort of figure this out, and everybody's going to be pretty pleased with how things come together. But the cap, I think, is necessary, just for the integrity of the program. Very quickly, just from a historical perspective, I attended Milton schools K through 6, and just as I was leaving, the system, this program, this French program, started, and I think it's important to remember where we started. It was intended to augment and accent what has always been a great program. It was not intended to dominate and control a system like it has been. And people have talked a lot about the choice for French, they should have that choice. I believe my wife and I should have the, you know, choice that our son doesn't have a teacher who they hired at the 12th hour, who taught fifth grade last year, but next year, she teaches second. That's very unsettling. People talk about real estate values, like this is a banker and tradesman forum. Milton has had wonderful real estate values for 100 years, and they'll have it for 100 more, whether there's a French cap or not, and that should be the least of our concerns. So I want to thank the committee for their diligence and volunteerism, and just wanted to make it clear where I stood.
Hello, my name is Matilda, and I'd like to, and my mom and dad moved here from a different city, and, and I was, they were saying, like, B, buh, buh, A, ah, ah, ti, tuh, tuh, buh, at, bat, and I already knew how to read big, thick books. So we moved, so we moved here, and it was great to learn how to speak French, and please don't take the, please don't take the French immersion away from kids. Thank you.
I'll ask your mother to sign the paper on your behalf. Thank you.
I'm not quite sure how I can follow that. My name is Patty Elliott, and I live at 97 Briar Brook Street. I have two boys, and one is I have two boys and one is almost 13, so I will watch what I say. But both, one of my boys went through the French immersion program and one is currently in the English program and I support the cap. I really caution people who have very, very small children to make a choice at such a young age. I think it's really important even to take your kindergarten years to assess whether one program would be good for your child or the other program. And I caution you to institute a grandfathering because then I think families would just continue and not look at the new child with fresh eyes and see if the program is appropriate. I have to say that I think the English program does not get enough good press and I really, really do not understand why. It is a wonderful program with wonderful teachers and there are wonderful things happening in those classrooms. When my oldest child started in the Milton Public Schools, I was able to go and sit in on both classrooms, the French immersion classroom and the English classroom, and I advise everyone to take that opportunity and to see those classrooms and to see the learning that's going on and then to make their decision because there really is no bad decision. My oldest son who went through the French immersion program and was very successful in that program is now in seventh grade at Milton Academy and he is in French again. In sixth grade, they do not offer a language option, but he is in French one, part B. And there are other children in that classroom who are eighth graders, he's in seventh, and they are all speaking French at relatively the same level. This is not an irreversible decision. If your child does the English program and you want them to take French or another language, they are not going to be 100 million years behind the eight ball. They may be one year behind. And so just keep that in mind.
Someone on the side? You may have to raise that a little bit.
Not that much. Okay. Good evening. My name's Julia Hogan and I live at 380 Hillside Street in Milton, obviously. It seems recently this discussion has devolved into an us versus them conflict, which I think is very unfortunate and I think we should take this opportunity to meet our challenges creatively as a unified community. But I propose an alternative to this cap, which I think might benefit everyone. Let the French immersion students participate part-time in the co-talk program. Create English language daily experiences that include co-taught hosts and French immersion guests. Select the guest rounds robin from an appropriate group of French immersion students and you access a new, larger, more diverse pool of potential role models. This requires creativity and scheduling and planning, but as a leading expert in this field, Marilyn Friend describes in co-teaching, "A simple solution that isn't that simple after all. Co-teaching is by nature highly dynamic, personalized, adaptive and creative. Co-teachers and their administrative support already possess the gifts and skills to make this work. The model of same class, same classroom, same teacher could be more flexible. Our children already do this for art, music and gym. Like those classes, this plan will not detract from core studies. It will not have a significant impact on the French immersion experience because participation is spread out across the entire pool of French students at the school and the opportunity to engage in regular visits to the co-talk classroom would be enriching for the immersion kids." The superintendent's office indicates that we have two co-talk classes per grade, not per school, but town-wide. Locate these classes in schools with two English strands. This ample pool of role models and adding the French participation part-time will provide a far more diverse and deep pool to the proposed cap. Now, on the chance that this results in no English strands at one of the schools, so what? It's more important that we place the needs of the students and the parents ahead of the hard and fast rules of administration and convenience. The school system must accommodate the needs and preferences of Milton families, not the other way around. Any plan must ensure optimal service to children with special needs. This plan does. It makes available a broad pool of role models, even broader than the cap. Some worry about children for whom the more dynamic environment would be disruptive, but again, such situations could be handled creatively and appropriately by the co-taught teachers. The presence of new guests is not an obstacle, it could be a new tool to help. This plan allows us to avoid adopting the proposed cap while better addressing issues related to size, depth and demographics of the role model pool. It engages more children, providing valuable new experiences for French immersion and co-talk kids alike. As you must be aware, the proposed cap has received a great deal of negative response. Milton parents such as myself do not want their children deprived of this educational choice. There is an opportunity here to enhance every child's experience while depriving no one. I ask this school committee not to adopt this cap, which is guaranteed to create one class of lottery winners and one class of lottery losers. This resentment, divisiveness and anger that are likely to follow are very easy to predict and I can't imagine that the school committee would choose to have that as its legacy. It is more important to do this correctly than to do it quickly. Please take the time to explore this idea and all other creative proposals that might help to unify our community instead of driving us further apart. Thank you.
My name is Carol Seidman and I live at 64 Pagoda Circle. And I also sort of split my time between the French immersion program and the co-taught program. I actually am not attached to any program. I really am looking at a, at this in a very different way. I think that the bright white lines between the three programs is part of the problem. We do not have enough support for disabled kids in the French immersion program and that's why there is an issue there because not all kids who are on IEPs cannot participate in the French program. There are many, many kids who have disabilities, who have different ways of learning, but who are brilliant. My son Elijah, who I've asked for an IEP for since he's arrived at Milton and has not gotten one. My son Benjamin, and he's in the French immersion program. My friend, my, my son Benjamin, who is more obviously disabled because of his language processing issues, has an IEP, although it takes me over a year, every year to get my IEP signed. I have worked tirelessly. I could bring bags and bags and bags of IEP papers in here. So there is an issue far beyond whether or not there's going to be a cap here in Milton. The issue is whether or not we're going to recognize that disability and brilliance are not mutually exclusive. That is the thing that hurts my heart the most in this discussion. My son Elijah is brilliant, but he is disabled. Whether the town wants to call him that or not is certainly, you know, something we'll continue to talk about. But the truth of the matter is, is he was born at 31 and a half weeks. Both of them were. And he has low tone due to prematurity. He has many other issues and the town has refused to serve for that. So I feel that there's a lot of time spent in this town denying services, blaming parents with kids with disabilities because it looks like we don't want the other kids to succeed. I think that universal design for learning, which is really the most kind thinking, needs to be implemented in order for this town to save money, which what we're all talking about, and be able to reallocate the resources so that kids with different abilities can participate in all the programs. When no program is noticed by, because right now for me, it feels like 1977 when I graduated Milton High School and there were three tracks, the disabled kids, the tech kids and the kids that were going to college. And we may be calling them different things now, but it's feeling a lot like that again. So I am going to rail against that system over and over, drip by drip, to say, almost everyone in this room has a disability if they look close enough and if they don't now, they will. And if we're going to look at disabled people as a problem as opposed to something else, it's, it's really heartbreaking for me as a parent. And as a sign language interpreter who has worked in the field and has had the honor and privilege to work with some of the most brilliant and giving people who let me into their lives, into their operating rooms because they have no choice. Okay? So I have been humbled by my position in life and this, my son Benjamin, I just have to add one thing here, who is the kid on the IEP, but he has the best handwriting in his class and he also can draw better than anybody in his class and he teaches the role models how to do that. And he also defends them when the teacher criticizes them for not being able to do that. So that is where your kids might be with, my kid. It's not really awful. What's really great is there's a lot of technology these days and I really would like to see the technology person from the town here and engaged in this conversation, as well as, I really think the, I'm going to end with a quote from the disability community, "Nothing about us without us." Thank you.
Name is Aaron Mann, 31 Longwood Road. I, I just had a couple hopefully brief points. One, I think that most important is equality for, for all students and I think that that doesn't mean taking from, it means giving to. My students benefit from equality, my, excuse me, my three children benefit from equality given to others and I think it, it's something to strive for in many different ways. I do think that a lot of folks have mentioned the issue of sibling preference and I think that hasn't fully been addressed beyond a mention of a number in, in one school. I think it's tricky. I don't pretend to have the answer, but I think that when you think of equality, you also have to think of equality within a family. And that involves, you know, my older son who's now in the French program and his younger siblings who may or may not be suitable, may or may not want to go, but I think should have that option, should have that option to learn from their brother, to learn frankly what is a somewhat obscure language in America and be able to share that together. And I think that we're losing sight, if we only think about equality in the school, we're missing equality in the family by only focusing on that and getting rid of sibling preference without discussion of that.
My name is Anne Gatnick and I'm the mother of two children in the English program. My son is a sixth grader at Pierce and my daughter is at Glover. I've had many reasons to be proud of them during their short academic careers, especially thanks to the excellent teachers in the English program. I'd actually like to give a shout out to their teachers, Mrs. McCarthy, Turner, Brink, Kessler, McNeil, Ford, Sinton, Bodkin, Willis, Comer and Mr. E. They're rock stars. They deserve our praise and thanks. They don't deserve to have their talents and accomplishments diminished by people in this community. But I'm actually here to tell you about one of my proudest moments as a mother. Two years ago, I was waiting to pick up my daughter Lydia in front of the Glover School when her teacher, the lovely Amanda Brink, approached me and pulled me aside. She explained that there had been an incident on the playground and that Lydia was involved. She went on to tell me that a girl in Lydia's co-taught class was being teased by a group of kids on the playground during recess that morning. When Lydia came upon her friend, she saw that the sunny, loving, light up the room with her smile girl was literally paralyzed with embarrassment and the smile had been wiped from her face. My daughter is typically very reserved and shy. She hates to have all eyes on her and until that point, she was the type of kid that would hide behind me when another adult approached or someone was looking at her. But when she saw what was happening, she hugged her friend and she stood up to the gang of kids yelling and pointing at the kids who were teasing to stop it right now. She gathered more friends and found, found an aide yelling, "You have to come now, we have to help my friend." When her teachers asked her about the incident later in the classroom and how she got the courage to be brave and stand up for her friend, she said that she couldn't let her friend get hurt when all she ever wants is to love everybody. She just couldn't understand it. But don't get me wrong, she didn't stand up for her friend because her friend has special needs. She wouldn't even know what that means. All she saw was her peer, her classmate, her friend, a girl just like her who deserved to be treated the way all children should be treated fairly and with respect and kindness. Judging from the many comments I have unfortunately been privy to in the past few weeks, I know that this is a lesson from a six-year-old that might be lost on some of the people in this community, but I hope it's not lost on the school committee. Children who are not given a spot in the French immersion program will have equal opportunities for success in English, but children with special needs will be left behind if the cap is not implemented. Please do what is fair for all of our children in Milton. Thank you.
Hello, I am Atilla Jaranolu, live on 2 Elliot Circle. Good evening, everybody. I am a father of two boys, one of them is in the French program and the younger one, I don't think he will mind it when I say it. Where's the camera? He will, he's looking forward to starting the French program and he's, yes, he's five and I have a feeling he's ripe for it, that he could do because he is bilingual already. And first off, I'd like to thank, of course, the school district, our committee and our superintendent, and I'd like to appreciate, please, this is a huge challenging task that you've been taking on over the last several months and I understand you probably are under a lot of pressure. The, I look at the room, it's quite filled, it could be fuller. It's not half empty, it's half full. I notice there are some families who are not here because they are, you know, a lot of people are quite distraught about this possibility of a cap or not. And so this is already a very charged topic, obviously. I am, I came here worried, of course, about the cap, thinking with the question, how, how, how can we justify the decision to tell a child that whether he will learn the same things as his brother and sister did, where is, is now rests on a lottery ticket or a coin toss. But I am now encouraged, I must admit, with some of the recommendations perhaps or considerations, I mean, foot for thought. And, and I'm encouraged to hear my fellows talk. Mr. Vidi, you gotta speak more often. You gotta speak more often. You post much better, I mean, you'd speak much better than you post. The, 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 here are some thoughts. As a child psychiatrist, I understand and appreciate what you do and all the teachers, what they're doing. It goes a lot of, a lot of energy and consideration, care and thought goes into educating a young mind and helping them reach their true potential. But a vote this magnitude, I think it requires more thought and yes, the decision is, is upon us perhaps, but I would recommend, I would ask that you delay this, this vote and consider some of the more creative solutions and look at them. Up until last month, I did not hear about the STEM program and it is not about stem cell research, which I heard from some people that they really think it is what it is, but it's not. So we need to let it flourish. We need to, we, people need to know more about all this. A cap, a cap is not going to govern or guide a decision to, or a parent to think whether their child is ready for a, you know, a bilingual education or, I think more information will help that. So let's, let's hold all these workshops or presentations about French immersion, what it entails, STEM program, what it entails to our families early on. And so let's, let's look at those numbers, let's how, let's see how the STEM program flourishing, how is that going to affect the enrollment? Let's see that. I have one question, of course. How did we come up with the 182? What is the, what's the desired ratio for the number of role models? And what is the, how did we come to that number? What is the data behind that perhaps? And so, and again, I'm going to walk away with, from this meeting with hope that you will consider seriously delaying this vote and looking at more solutions, more data, reaching into our community, Ms. O'Dwyer, I'm hoping I'm not messing up her last name, but who volunteered and helped you, and I'm sure there are many more people who would be willing to put in their time and, and energy and work together for a better solution for this program. to put in their time and, and energy and work together for a better solution for all of us. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Sammy Ramadan. Proud of our new home in Milton yesterday. Just moved last year to Milton, we're renting and we moved from Florida. Basically, the, coming into this meeting today, I had no idea of all the discussion that's been going around, so it's been very educational for me to hear about the various point of view and I commend everybody for their dedication and their very, you know, commitment to this, to this town and their school system. Having said that, I have never felt that there was really two camps of pro and count, counter the, the school, the, the French immersion. I think it, for us anyways, in our family, was a natural decision, my wife's French and by moving to this town, it was a selection of the town because of the French immersion. There was another town in this Commonwealth that has that, which is Holliston, and we preferred this town because of the, the school system overall, not just French or English, the school system overall here has a very good reputation from, even from outer state. So I don't feel that at any point where there were anybody that, I don't know if that was addressed at any time, that there's, the English system is, is less of a degree than the French. What I'm, what I wanted to just stress here and, and, and repeat probably from the first speaker on, on, is the point of, the decision that when somebody have put into, it's not, it's not every day that you can just move and, and, and move your children and family from one place to another. So when, when somebody have actually did that and moved into the city because of a specific, education for us is, is a prime, it's, it's the most important thing. And when we have, and many families have decided to do this and, and moved their families to come into Milton because of, of the educational system, I think grandfathering is the least that should be, you know, considered for those families just because of the trouble that has been, you know, they, they went through to, to be here and, and, you know, they elected to this and to repeat basically what everybody have said, it's the same thing that it's not fair for children within the same family to, not, not to experience the same things. And I think it's, even though I've heard a lot of talk about, we don't, you know, the choice of, you know, committing the children at a very young age, I think there's a lot of families who are in our situation where they have some connection to French that decided and know that, that this is what they want, so it's not like it's haphazard choice. And the last thing I wanted to mention is, I'm not sure what, I have never seen anything about the numbers for this year, to be specific about this year overall, what are, what's the outlook on, on the possibility of this cap, you know, how many families will be affected? And based on history, I mean, I read somewhere in the notes that historically that, you know, it's only twice that where maybe this happened, where it exceeded the, the number of children allowed. So if you can just stress that point or address it. Thank you.
If I might answer that, the last two speakers have brought that up. Again, for those, we go back to Mr. Pavlicek outlined what, how the buildings are set up. And so next year, there would be two French classes at the Glover, two French classes at the Collycott, one French class at the Tucker, and then keep in mind, there are four kindergarten, four kindergartens at the Cunningham. And we have said that based on the choice of the parents, that we would, if parental choice, there were enough children, there would be two French first grades at the Cunningham. So if you add up all of those to that gentleman in the back, if you add up that, that's how we get to the 182, if we cap all those classes at 26. Keeping in mind, the English program, to be able to have the role models, to have, to be able to create positive learning environments, the English classes have to have 18 to begin. And keep in mind that we start the English classes at 18 because when new children move into the district, they move into the English program, they don't move into the French program unless they come from a French-speaking country and they sit down with our world language director. So next year, the number would be 182 and we checked for the last 10 years and there were only two years that the request by parents was beyond 182. And I think it's important to keep in mind, we had our world language director research across the country and we haven't been able to find an immersion program that doesn't cap. And so we've worked all these years and when Mr. Pavlicek mentioned when the ratio was 50/50 and we could have populations in our English classes, again, to make assignments, to have positive learning environments, but when it went, the percentage went to 66%, people said, they've asked and it's, and rightfully they should ask, why the cap now? I, I, just a small aside, I sat with a family, a couple that are in the audience tonight a year ago, when the average, when the percent went about 55% and I said, and it will never go to 66%. And so I've said to people, as your superintendent, you could look at me next year if it went to 70 or 75% and you would say, you didn't make us aware? So to go from 55% to 66% when it's never been that high, again, that was, that's what brought us to the table. Two years ago, we were talking about the percentages, watching the percentages. And so to Mr. Pavlicek's point, with the STEM program, hearing parents tonight, and this is valuable, advocates for both of our programs speaking up and the responsibility is, is on us to share the successes in both of our programs, that we would be able to meet the requests of all of the parents next year. That's our goal.
Just to put a number on your answer, this year, there are 300 people in French, that is the most, 200, 300 people in French, sorry, 320 in French, 200 in French. So had the, the 182 cap been in place this year, we would have had 18 people beyond the limits of the, of the French program. That's the most it has ever been. The other time was 16, I believe. So, but other than that, we've never, other than those two times, we've never exceeded 182.
Right. And, and a school committee member just brought up a good point, that the way the schools are set up, that, and so you clearly understand that it's really 156, but because we created the extra kindergarten at the Cunningham School, when we created this proposal, we said if parents request, if the number of parents request, we will have two French and two English at the Cunningham School next year.
Any other questions we need to answer?
I don't think so.
All right, we'll go back to the microphones.
Hi. I'm a little nervous. My name is Deborah Milbauer. I live at 16 Winthrop Street and I have two kids at Glover, one in fourth grade French and one in kindergarten. I am grateful for the committee's hard work on this challenging issue. You all are volunteers and give up your own personal family time to work on important issues that affect your children as school committee members. I am grateful for your service as a school committee member. Please know that my concerns and questions regarding the cap are not a reflection of my appreciation for the very difficult position you're in. We all appreciate the difficult position you're in, even though we and myself are, are against the cap. So I just want to put it out there that we acknowledge how difficult this is and it's, it's not an easy thing to do, but we're still anti-cap, so just want to say that. Okay, also, with all due respect, and I've sent you many emails about this, but I just want to put it out there that I have, this is very low, that I have concerns about the format of this, the format of this evening. A question and answer session would have answered our questions and this citizen speak is very silencing and I know that the format you've tried to come up with is the best that you could, but there were eight or 10 parents who spoke and you only responded to maybe two or three of their comments or questions. And so the format doesn't really allow a response to people's questions and concerns. So I realize the night's over and it's a done deal, but I just have to say in terms of process, it was very silent, it's very silencing for me and for other people I know to not have an opportunity to have a follow-up question. And I know that you said, and I think that it's driven by fear that it would be contentious and people would be out of line, but I think that we're all adults and we respect you and we respect each other ideally, and I think there's a way with strong moderation that we could have had a question and answer. So I just want to put it out there that I'm very upset with the process of tonight's format. Okay, so the other thing has to do with process as well. I'm, I really want you to explain why the committee is not considering a two-week delay or a four-week delay to explore non-cap suggestions in a public forum. It sounded like you all thought about it and talked about it internally, but as families, I don't know all the options you reviewed, you know, you... You know, there was a presentation about why the situation is untenable, but it would be helpful to also hear a presentation about other options other than a cap. So just quickly about the delay, I appreciate that it takes time to implement such a complicated plan, which is a cap. And I appreciate that you, as the school committee, really need all the time you can get to implement the cap because it's a new protocol. However, this decision is going to affect our children for the rest of their lives. It is not equivalent to making the baseball team or getting iced at a French horn or the basketball clinic. All of these activities can be applied for again in the next season or the next year. Not getting into French is a lifelong consequence with no opportunity ever to enroll again. It is different. French immersion, not getting into French immersion in first grade is different than other examples of getting shut out of something else because of over-enrollment like basketball or, or an art program. I learned Spanish as a second language as an adult. I speak Spanish. It's changed my life. I've lived abroad, I have friends all over the country, my work is, actually, many of my jobs I've gotten are because I speak Spanish and my work is enriched by my Spanish and it, and it... My work-life and my personal experience in my work-life would not be the same if I didn't speak Spanish. It has changed my life and I had to learn it as an adult and that was really, really hard. And so learning it as a child, so for the first few days, it is really, really hard, but then by the holiday break, by the, by the December break, kids are sort of caught up and yes, it's a difficult transition period, but it is a gift. It is, it is a gift that we will be getting iced out of. And I have a kindergartner and I am terrified that I won't be able to give my second daughter the gift that my older daughter has. I, I am, I mean, honestly terrified. Me speaking Spanish has changed my life and I cannot imagine taking that opportunity away from her. And I understand the untenable position you're in, but it is like robbing families of a gift and, and I can't say, I can't say it any more emphatically than that. Also, you said that the World Language Committee's recommendations were reviewed and rejected, which I still don't understand why. I feel like that needs to be presented too. I don't, and you also said that you ultimately chose between homeschool and not and I just want to say, as a parent, if you had asked me, I would say, I would choose going to French in a different school than staying in my homeschool. So that's an assumption you made. So that's an assumption you made and I'm just wondering how many families you asked when you made that decision and, and how many of us, if you asked us in the room, would choose French over homeschool? So that's, so that, that I want an explanation for. I'm almost done. Also, I just want to say that choosing French is not a rejection of English. I am so, 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 so deeply sorry that people have said hurtful things about the English program or kids in the English program. I personally have only heard amazing things about it and in fact, have heard amazing, amazing things about the co-taught room and I always felt a twinge of, mm, I wish my kid had experienced that. So I've only heard amazing things about English and my choosing French has nothing to do with English, it has to do with me wanting to give my child a gift. And I feel really badly that English parents, that, that individuals have said inappropriate or disrespectful things about English or English track kids and I feel badly that those individual comments have sort of colored the rest of us because most of the people I know who are in this room... So I, so I apologize on behalf of everyone that there were hurtful things said, but I've only heard amazing things about English and I, I really feel badly that things were said that, that were hurtful. Okay, the last thing I want to say, and this is really for me the most important, I really need you to go into detail about why the school committee thinks it's unfair to have a sibling, a sibling preference. There are many straddle families, straddle meaning one kid or, or more than one kid already in the French program and other kids who are waiting to go into the French program. So there are many straddle families in this room who I know of and I'm sure more that I don't know of, that really need an explanation as to why you're not considering the sibling preference. This to me is so central and the fact that I still don't understand and the only explanation I've heard was that it's not fair. Now, straddle families are different than families that don't have kids in French yet. The loss to a straddle family, not getting into French immersion for the subsequent children, is very different than a family not getting their first child in, which is also unfortunate, but it is inherently different. I appreciate it would be a loss for those families as well, but the two-family situations are very different. Please explain why the school committee is giving both families the same lottery protocol. It seems to me that it discounts the multiple complicated reasons why splitting kids in the same family would negatively impact the whole families, the whole family differently than families whose children are not in French immersion. Please explain this. This is very upsetting for people, so please explain beyond that you just think it's unfair. I, I, I need sort of a more in-depth explanation. And lastly, I am very upset about this decision and I'm upset about the process also, but I realize that the school committee is working in good faith and I know there's no malicious intent and I know you all volunteer your time and your energy to make the system fair and academically of high standards, but please heed the cries of the community. Have compassion. I have compassion for your amazingly difficult situation and your selfless donation of your time and energy to the school committee. Please return the compassion and offer a delay in this decision and this vote tomorrow night so this lifelong decision is understood by everybody. Thank you very much.
Debbie, did you sign?
Yeah, we'll, we'll respond, we'll let you speak first and we'll come back.
My name is Jessica Delaney, I live at 91 Valley Road. There have been very, there have been a lot of very well-articulated arguments for and against capping the French immersion program. I just wanted to take a moment to perhaps offer a different take or suggestion. I have a daughter in kindergarten this year who is obviously directly affected by the decision that you make tonight. I do believe though that there are better ways to market the English program that could perhaps make the decision a bit more difficult for families to make, instead of many feeling that they have to choose French because of perhaps some misconceptions about the English program. I understand you've implemented the STEM program this year, it sounds amazing and it seems like a great, fantastic step towards marketing or, or beefing up the English program. However, I urge you to think about the addition of other important curriculum like music and art that seem to have, have been offered less and less these days in our schools for our children. If the English program offered, if the English program offered the STEM program as well as classes like music and art, special programs for music and art upwards of like three and four times a four times a week, I would really think it would become more of a choice for parents like myself and in the end, hopefully accomplishing a better balance of English and French enrollment. Thank you.
My name's John Phelan. Thank you for being here tonight. I was the co-chair of the World Language Committee, so in reference to the timeline question, I just want to give some background as to how the district has approached this work and analyzed this work for more than a few years. In November of 2009, seventeen members of a committee got together that represented teachers in both the French and English program, administrators in both the English and French program, parents in both the English and French program, some of whom are in the audience tonight. We met over twelve times over five months to discuss different ways that we can balance the program, and we were looking at it from a budgetary angle at that point during that budget season. But what we realized when we looked at it, that we needed to actually balance the programs to ensure that both programs were equitable and flourishing and could continue indefinitely. So our task was to investigate the sustainability of both programs. And we did provide a presentation to the school committee on April 6th. This World Language Committee report is on the web. I pulled it off there today. And there were different scenarios that we did explore, that we presented on, and I do believe that, as we had mentioned in our last page, and future considerations, the committee predicted that they were taking a step when they tried the alternative assignment program to give everyone French who signed up, but there had to be some sort of a tiered lottery to adjust for it and organize for it for a variety of reasons. And if, in fact, that did not work, the committee did look ahead and say that there may be a need for a cap because sustaining both programs in a high-quality way to ensure classrooms that have good learning environments with student demographics was important to this group. And they forecasted that if this alternative method did not work over the last few years, that capping may be necessary. So this conversation has been inside the district and outside in the community for several years. As we review the enrollment year to year, we did see in May that when the response came through for this current year's choice, that there may be a need to cap. The superintendent of schools called the leadership team together. We talked about the different strategies that we may want to review in the World Language Committee report, tried to get creative about what things we could offer, i.e. the STEM program, and began to say out loud that if this number continued to grow, it would not be sustainable. So in May, we made a presentation to the school committee. They asked for more information. We provided an extraordinarily amount of information in, over the summer, with the support of Dr. O'Dwyer from Boston College, and then made some FAQs available on the web, posted all that information on the web, and has been on the web. And I know that that doesn't mean anything to folks who don't go looking for it because they're not sure it's going on with respect to it being during the summer and people not being fully attentive to this type of work being done. The group did decide to make sure that we presented it in September, and we want to be respectful of everybody's opinion. The reason why I speak is to let folks know that this did take root some years ago, that this is not an overnight situation that we are responding to, that the goal is to provide sustainable programs so both French and the English program can flourish for years to come. We don't want any one to be distinguished by the other. We want both to flourish, and that has been the premise that we've been working from. We hope to be flexible enough that if we do enhance the English, as we proposed, with some STEM opportunities, that it becomes a move point. And we feel that the amount of folks that will still be able to access the French program if they choose to do so is still in a large enough number that we can provide two programs that are quality programs moving forward. So although I cannot ask anyone to delay or not delay the vote, that is the committee's choice, I want to bring everybody up to date with this at least three- to four-year-old concern that the district has had, has talked about, has researched, has investigated and analyzed up to this point. In relation to siblings, if I may, to answer the question directly, with very clear understanding that we have always tried to address the sibling issue because we feel it's educationally valuable for students and families to stay together in the same school building. I don't necessarily prescribe that staying together by program is the most valuable piece of that, but it's a school, being with a family from kindergarten through fifth grade, which is what I would consider the most educational value. I personally have five children. They have all gone through the Milton Public Schools. They've all been fortunate to go through the same school. They've been in different programs. And I feel, and we feel as a district, that the sibling issue is more school-based, so you can be school partners and families can be school partners with one school K to five. In addition to that, I feel when we look at the numbers of how many folks do have siblings right now in the current Ks, that it would set up a situation that folks who did not already have a sibling would really be reduced in their chances to access the program if they chose. And we are trying to balance this level of choice and equity and inequity amongst all these different aspects of the plan. So when we look at siblings not being able to follow along, it's more out of the sense of trying to be as equitable as possible with this plan in place that has pockets of some types of inequity throughout it that we're trying to balance in total, but we realize that there may be some folks who would feel differently about parts of it. So I hope that answers the sibling question, and I hope that answers some of the timeline questions that were proposed tonight.
I left my notes at home, so I'm a little nervous and a little disorganized, but I wanted to speak to some basic detail questions. I'm sorry, Andrea Sinnet, 60, Cape Town Street. Some detailed questions for your consideration, and I think many of us have those questions. First of all, it's not clear to me what a lottery is. I'm assuming it's an absolute blind lottery. There's no, there was some suggestion or rumor that they were going to be looking at and doing some balancing, and so that's one thing. The second is, it's not clear to me what a homeschool is. And as I look at my own neighborhood, there are kids in my neighborhood who go to all four schools. At each of my children's schools, there are kids who come from all Milton neighborhoods. And I know in the prior assignment plan, there was a discussion that the commitment was to the program, not necessarily to the homeschool. In my own situation of my three kids, my oldest two are in French and at different schools because we've chosen the program over the homeschool. We've had a terrific experience. I figure when we get to Pierce, we'll know half the families in town. So, you know, I appreciate what you're saying about the homeschool, but I don't think we all as a community have been given the opportunity to express our own views on that. And we know that the schools are all mixed up, right? Because people who might have moved from one area to another are still grandfathered into the original school. So it's not clear to me whether you're also suggesting that when each child comes up in a family, you would look fresh at what street they live on as opposed to... So that's just unclear to me.
We'll answer afterwards.
Okay. Actually, feel free because I need to take a breath. So the other questions that I have fundamentally is, I know the World Language Report talked about the unique opportunities at Cunningham and Collicott to combine, moderate, so on and so forth. I know Superintendent Gormley, you say that those are two distinct schools, but I do ask whether that needs to be the case. The other big-picture item I have is I'm struck by Mr. Pavlichek's notion that it's really only twenty kids or twenty families that need to move. And so I wonder if the proposal is too draconian in that the pendulum really swings too far the other way. Because as I've thought about it and talked to families and said, all right, you've read the assignment plan, what would your decisions be at each step of the way? And it seems to me at each step, the choices drive a family towards English, whether that's to keep sibling preference or homeschool or other reasons. And so, while I'd like to see a delay, I'd at least like to see in the first several years, if you go ahead with a cap, that it's a soft cap, that you have an opportunity to study how the new proposal drives families to make choices, but there's still an overflow classroom somewhere that would allow for those families who are committed to the program to go to it. We're already at two schools. It's tough, I'll tell you. Three would probably put me in an early grave, but I think I would do it for my third child who's currently in kindergarten. I think, I think I've got most of them.
Hi, my name is Mary Claire Cantor. I live at 51 Elton Road, a lifelong Milton resident, so I didn't move here for French. My daughter is in first grade. We did decide to choose French for her, and I guess my question is, do the cap... I understand, I don't want there to be a cap. I have another daughter, so I would love for there not to be a cap. I understand why there has to be one. Having said that, I wonder if the cap in an auxiliary class, to go upon what she was just saying, really have to be mutually exclusive? Because when you talk about those 182 numbers, it just seems to me like every year, there's going to be at least twenty kids that are not going to be getting into the French program because of the auxiliary class, pretty much no matter what your percentage is. So I was wondering if there really is a percentage the school system is looking for and whether you can have a cap and still have that auxiliary class. I don't understand why they would be mutually exclusive. I wanted to make sure when you were talking about those numbers and you were talking about up to twenty-six kids in a French class, if you really meant twenty-six kids would be going into a French class, or if there really is underneath that a percentage that you're looking for, which would not let twenty-six kids in a French class. And Superintendent Gormley kind of suggested there might be when she talked about twenty-six kids being in the French class, but there still needs to be at least eighteen kids in an English class to make that viable, which makes me believe that there's some sort of an underlying number there, and it would be nice to know what that was. And then lastly, which I almost hate to ask this question, but there's been a lot of rumors out there about what this lottery would look like, and there's been a lot of talk about balancing the classrooms. And does that really mean that there's going to be a separate lottery for boys and girls? Because, believe it or not, that rumor is very much out there. And again, my other daughter's a girl, so I'd hate to see that because she's a girl, she somehow is in even a separate lottery and has even less of a chance of getting into the program. It just doesn't seem inherently fair. Having said that, I understand there not being a sibling preference. I wish there could be. Again, my older daughter's in first grade, and I understand that in the past, a lot of that sibling preference had to do with the auxiliary class and keeping kids in the same school together. And inherently, that makes sense to me, and I get it. I'm not sure if I would choose French for my next child. She's still too young for me to make that decision. If I did make that decision, I would like to think there might be some sort of something for siblings, although I understand why not. But I can tell you that, like, going through the homework with my daughter who's in the first grade and learning all about gaffy and gaffy washing, I mean, I'm on Google Translate all the time, and it's very time-consuming to help her with her homework. So maybe there should be some thought to the program because it is very time-consuming to have your kids in French, and it would be much easier if I did decide it was the right program for my second one, having sort of done all the pre-work the first time around.
If I might, first of all, on behalf of the Collicott-Cunningham, they are physically one building. They share a cafeteria, a library, an auditorium. But if you put those schools together, it would be 1,100 children. And you don't want to send your child to an elementary school with one principal that has 1,100 children. An elementary culture, 400, 500, 600 children are what we're running in Milton. And so, there are opportunities at the Collicott-Cunningham, but I can't speak for the Collicott-Cunningham parents directly, but they have told me in my interactions that they feel like they're separate communities. They have separate principals, separate PTOs, site councils, and they're two flourishing schools. We have run lotteries with the tiered lottery for the last three years. Nobody's ever called the school committee or the superintendent's office. We made them very public. We haven't gone into what the details will be of whether we do a random computer lottery, which we would investigate other communities, how they do the lottery, how they make the information public. We haven't gone into the steps of how to do the lottery, but we would make it as public as possible. We're not going to, to your question, take and separate boys and girls, children on IEPs. There's not going to be a separate lottery. All the children will be in the same pool. The twenty-six, your question, again, I have to stress that when we begin the process, if this proposal passes, first, we're going to assign the children in the English, to the English. The parents who have chosen English will be assigned first. The class-size cap in the French immersion will be really driven by, do we have to have more children in the English program? So that really will be driven, and then when I explained that we'll watch those numbers all through the summer and make assignments. And this assignment process is no different, if you ask your friends or relatives in other communities. In Globe South, there was a spot on a community in the South Shore all last summer asking for volunteers to equalize their first grades or their kindergartens. So we go to a tremendous amount of work. The community and the parents have worked with us because when you start these kindergartens in first grades, we try to equalize the class size. And so, there will be no separating of children. Somebody had asked about homeschool. We determine homeschool at kindergarten. And then, over the years with that tiered lottery, some parents or guardians have made the choice, when the option came up, to move to a different school.
Can you just be more than talking about why shares is not going to homeschool? I think that's come up a few times.
Well, again, we're here tonight to hear you, and we, one of the speakers spoke about all the different options. And again, this option really is maximizing the number of seats in French immersion. Of all of the options that we looked at, to, this really gave the most options to the French immersion program, and it really came down to homeschool or that shared Collicott-Cunningham class and the shared Tucker Glover class. And so, I'm honest with you, of all of the options that we looked at, from entire schools being French immersion, to one class at every school, again, in the leadership team, we looked at the whole spectrum of ideas. And so, we have an audience here tonight, and we heard people would leave their homeschool for French immersion. It really came down to those two options. But again, we chose the homeschool option to put through in the proposal.
Hi, my name's Beth Rooney, and I live at 20 Guile Road, and I actually was not planning on coming tonight. I was watching this on TV, and I saw the Vd's get up and speak, and I felt compelled to come over. I'm a mother of four children. I have three boys that have either graduated, I have two that have graduated from Glover, one that's in the fourth grade there, and a daughter in the kindergarten. And I just wanted to come and speak about the wonderful experience that we've had as families that have participated in the English program. And like many of you that chose French, you didn't choose against English. When we chose English, it was right for our children. We wasn't against the French program. I think they're both fabulous programs. And you've also spoken about the gift. My middle child, my middle son, had the gift of being a role model student, and it's really an amazing program. The first year, he did it with second grade, and we volunteered him for third grade, but we, they didn't need him that year. Then he did it again in fourth grade, and it was really an amazing opportunity for him. My oldest child, it wasn't, the program wasn't in existence then, and I look at that as a true gift for my son that got the opportunity to go through it. And a lot of you have talked about, I've heard a lot of comments about the deficiencies in the English programs, and I couldn't disagree more. I think the English program is fabulous. Your math program is unbelievable. The spiral math program has put my oldest two kids head and shoulders above some of their peers that are now in school with them that came from other districts outside of Milton. And again, when I, when I saw this on TV, I... And, again, when I, when I saw this on TV, I felt compelled to come over and just share one person's perspective that, of the gift that we were given. So, thank you.
How you doing? Jonathan Boynton, 6 Russell Wood Road. Mine are just actually technical questions, points of clarification. You keep talking about 182, but it doesn't sound like we're really offering 182, potentially. You're not talking about moving schools. Like, if one school is undersubscribed, one's over, you can't necessarily move, so it might be a bigger problem than 182? Correct me if I'm wrong. Not that it's a problem, but I just want that clarified. The other question I had was, my personal preference is homeschool. And you had mentioned that, what was it, even March or whatever? You would say the English, the English choosing parents would be placed, then you'd have a French lottery. Well, the people who were chosen, you know, bypassed the first win, first stage, the front row, the French lottery comes, and then there's these kids that are not benefiting from the lottery that they chose. What happens to them if the school in and of itself is sort of overpopulated? Feel like you're kind of forcing parents to choose English if they want to be guaranteed their homeschool.
If I might, there'll be a waiting list, there'll be a waiting list for students who aren't in the French, when we do the French immersion lottery, again, reverse numbers. And this process, we've, we've done this every year, and it will happen if this proposal's accepted. And, again, as children move in through the, into the district during the summer, we've done this out in several different ways. Children move in during the summer, again, they move into the English program, sir, and then, we would go to that waiting list, and we would increase the number in French, if they weren't all 26 across the district. And so, individuals who have moved in during the summer, or worked with us on student assignment, know that we work on it all summer, so there will be a reverse list, so that the optimum number is what we would work towards, again, after we fill our English classes.
Good evening, my name is Vivian Simon, I live at 8 Carmway Road in Milton. Couple of points, and I think you've pretty much heard everything already, but I want to have my voice heard too. My daughter's at the Cunningham School, she's in the French program, and I understand that that's one of the schools that is going to have one of the French classes removed. She has a younger sister, who will be joining the, the school system the year after next. I'm concerned as a parent, that if we choose to have our daughter in the French program, and she doesn't win a place in the lottery, that I will be forced to choose a schools or have her placed in a school system that is not where her sister is? Two parents, two working parents, two schedules, our weekends are bad enough, I, I just think it's unfair to our family life to have that scenario. The second item is, the STEM program, it, it sounds excellent, but I really think you need to start letting us know what it is, and publish a timeline for when you're going to have a proposal. My younger daughter, I don't know if she's going to be a good candidate for French, she's super excited learning French from her older sister, but maybe we'll, we'll want more, the, the STEM program for her. I, I don't know what it is, and I'd, I'd like to learn more. Thank you for your time.
My name is John O'Neill from 34 Governor's Road, and I just have some, I guess, technical questions. You've talked about requiring two English programs for each school. It's not a biased question, I'm just asking, why is that better than having it varied based on school and parent interest? The second question I've got is, what happens, you've talked about a, a big problem in terms of allocation of seats in the current classes, how does that affect the next four or five years going forward in the schools? Are you going to have to continue to move teachers around? What impact is that going to have on the schools as you go forward?
The third comment really is, I, I do respectfully disagree with Mr. Fialan as to what the preference would be about the difference between a home assignment, a homeschool assignment and a sibling preference, being somehow different than having a sibling preference for a French immersion program. I understand your point of view, I just disagree with it, and I think it makes assumptions about what people in town think that aren't necessarily true, or even borne out by asking them. And so, for that reason, I would ask you at least to ask people, what is their preference as you're making a fundamental change, and what otherwise has been available? And the last question I've got is, have you looked, given that you're now talking about using incoming kindergarten students, you know who your population is going to be for next year? Have you actually asked the parents in those classes, separate and apart from those that have a sibling preference, what their expectations would be for next year? I.e., is last year an anomaly? Or does it actually represent a continuing problem? Thank you.
Shannon Mahoney, 278 Elliott Street. I would first like to start by saying that I think the assumption that a few people have spoken of here, that anyone that is against the cap, or any parent that has chosen French for one of their children, is choosing against the English program, is, is flat-out wrong. The thought that people that are against the cap, or again, that have chosen French, have, have, are representative of a, a select few that have made ignorant comments about the English program, their teachers, or special education programs, assuming that that applies to any of us as a whole, is also ignorant. It's not true. I do not believe one program is stronger than the other, and I didn't choose French for my daughter because I felt French was stronger. I chose it because I thought it was best for her, and her learning style, and the opportunity that it would present her. That being said, she's only in first grade, she has two younger brothers who are very different than her, different personalities, different learning styles. When I had to choose which program I would select for her, I didn't know about STEM. It's implemented this year for her grade. I didn't know about its existent, existence. I have since read everything I can find about it on the schools, on the schools' website. I've read all kindergarten, first grade, presentation night, you know, PowerPoints that have been presented over the last several years. Not a mention of the potential introduction of STEM in future years, or, or when that, when that initiative would, would, would start. So here I am, making a decision, it's supposed to be an informed, intelligent decision as to which program would be best for my child, and I don't know about another innovative offering that the Milton Public Schools is, is, is beginning. I'm wondering why STEM was not advertised, why it was not marketed? Again, I don't see that English being deficient, but here is this new program, it's a boost to the English program, I think it would change demand. I would strongly consider it for my sons, who, as I said, have different styles of learning and have different interests than my daughter. Had I known about it, I would have even considered choosing English for her, and I think, I speak for several French, first grade French parents, that were unaware of STEM beginning this year, and they also said they might have chosen differently. So we're over-enrolled for this year, and I think it's a problem that could have been avoided, and I think the proposed cap is a drastic measure, that a vote tomorrow night is too soon, it's a drastic step that can't be reversed.
Good evening, I'm Mike Zulus from 69 Fairbanks Road. I have a, an observation and a suggestion. My perspective is as the parent of a prospective student in the, perhaps, the French immersion program. My wife and I are raising two daughters, the oldest is four and a half, and so, we'll be making that decision within the next probably 18 months, if there's, if there is a lottery in place. My daughters are being raised in a bilingual home, and so, we see certainly the advantages and the benefits, in our view, of language programs and language immersion. And in all likelihood, if there is a lottery, we will participate in it, in a year and a half, for our older daughter. All that as pref, as preface, I find it persuasive that the cap and lottery system is the best way forward to allow the French immersion program to flourish and to coexist, and that's what it seems to me to be the most important thing here, to coexist with the other programs in the elementary schools. Now, having said that, I am struck by the interest of those families that made a decision to enroll their students in French immersion, perhaps with the expectation that all of their students would be, would be enrolled in French immersion. And so, while it, it may not be logistically feasible to have a wholesale grandfathering of all of those families, perhaps, and this is, this is a suggestion, perhaps, those families who decided to enroll their, their children in, in French immersion, prior to now, perhaps those families could be accorded some weight in the lottery. Perhaps, there, there could be some waiting program for, for a sibling preference. Now, this wouldn't help my family, and perhaps it's, perhaps it's better if, if my wife and children never see this on YouTube. But it seems to me that, that given, given the, the expectation interest that these families may have had, that some weight should be accorded to that. So that's the suggestion. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Steffi Hartwell, I live at 9 Artwell Street. And I wanted to say thank you to the school committee and the school leaders for putting together this forum tonight, it's a great opportunity to see our community come together. And just as a, a point of explanation, I'm a card-carrying sociologist, and so, when you hear about sort of, there's been acrimony around this subject matter, I look out and I see, you know, what a great community we live in. Milton is doing really, really well. But I, as a sociologist, you know, I, I look for patterns and themes, and one clear pattern that I've seen tonight is this idea of siblings, and sibling, sibling preferences. And, and I don't think that's something the school committee can get around. I first brought this up in June to the school leaders, that I had concerns about this, because I'm a straddle family. So I learned the term straddle family tonight, and I'm pretty excited about that. I have a third grader in French and a kindergartner. And I, in July, I also spoke to the school committee about this issue, and I think, to date, the answers have been extremely inadequate. I, I have a kindergartner who wanders around the house singing the ABCs in French. My girls share a room, they have bunk beds, they're girls, I have two kids, not five. I mean, maybe the family dynamic is different if you, you have more kids and whatnot. So they, they're sharing the learning process together, and, and I think that my oldest, everybody's talking about the, the kindergarteners and what's going to happen to the kindergarteners, I think that my oldest is going to be the only one in my family who speaks French! You know, she's out there alone. So I ask with due consideration and due respect, that you listen to what you've heard from tonight, I think that this has come out as a clear and apparent pattern, and a need that needs further discussion, is the siblings or straddle families. Thanks.
Hi, Keith Wick, again. I just have a couple of comments. One thing from listening tonight that I just want to throw out there is, I've heard regarding the sibling preference and the reason for not doing that, is it's not equal. But yet, we aren't applying that same standard when you look at the percentages. So I think there's some inconsistencies that are existing within this plan, and that the idea of using the term "equal" is not necessarily representative across the plan. So I think that's something that needs to be kind of taken into consideration. Also, Superintendent Gormley, I think you did a really good job of explaining the COTAC program, but I don't feel like my question was answered in terms of how this lottery system in particular does what you're planning on, as far as creating role model students, which is outlined in there. You did a very good job of explaining what role models are, how those are chosen by the building principals. But I think we're still going with the assumption that by adding more students to the English program, we are actually adding more role model students. And I'm not so, I, I think that's kind of something that's, could be somewhat related, but is not a direct cause-effect relationship. And I think you can also hold that into consideration, since the lottery is also not going to be weighted in terms of IEP students that may be in the French, IEP students whose families may try and choose French, and may not make it into the French. Then you're also, once again, adding those students back into the English program, which is now further increasing potentially your numbers of IEP students within a COTAC classroom. So that's something else to consider in terms of, you know, how, how this lottery, which is a random lottery, is actually meeting the goals that are outlined in terms of kind of balancing IEP students versus regular ed students in COTAC classrooms? And also, kind of how those students are assumed to be role models, and increasing your pool of role models. I don't think that they are necessarily being addressed still, and I don't think that question was answered, even though I understand the reason for COTAC classrooms, I think that they are a great model, and definitely have their, definitely serve a great purpose for those students. My last question also is just around the vote itself. And if there is a vote tomorrow, and a no vote, is there a timeframe for a re-proposal or an adjustment to the proposal to come back between the, to the school committee? I know in certain types of government forums, if something is denied, there has to be like a six-month waiting list before it's brought back. I just didn't know if that occurs within the school, within the school committee or not. And if that doesn't occur, I encourage you, since you've committed to vote tomorrow, to vote no, and further explore this over the next few months. Thank you.
Let me just jump in with a couple of answers, since we have a few questions here. On the issue of students on IEPs who wish to get into French, if it's in their ed plan, they're not in the lottery, they're in French. I mean, if they, if they have an ed plan that says they're getting placed in French, they're getting placed in French. Those trump everything, the individual educational plans, those are contracts between the school and, and the students on special ed. We don't, as I say, the majority of our students on ed plans are not, but if they have one that says they're, they would get in French, they would, because that's, we have to abide by those plans. The issue of differentiating within the lottery, which partially addresses your issue of how do we know that if we have a, a bigger pool of English, we have necessarily a bigger pool of role models within the larger pool of English? We cannot differentiate legally within the lottery. Our legal counsel has told us that is ripe for all kinds of issues, if we start differentiating male, female, race, gender, you know, IEPs, anything. If, if we try to make any kind of a distinction within the lottery, that, that goes across, across all sorts of rulings that have come down. You can basically only do that as an absolute last resort, if you've been cited for discrimination of some sort through some sort of court, that has to be remedied, and all other remedies have failed. I mean, so, the, the, the short answer to your question is, can we guarantee that if we have more people in English, we have more role models? Actually, no. I mean, it might be an interesting draw, you know, and you, you just might not. It, it could conceivably happen. But there is no way we can, we can say, we're only going to choose, you know, we're going to designate so many seats in that lottery for people who could be role models in English. That, that just isn't going to, isn't going to pass legal muster. Ms. Kelly, you want?
I just wanted to mention that I think we had a report out on the demographics of the two different programs. The vast majority of students with IEPs are in the English program, which by default means that the pool that's in the French program right now, the majority, there's a much smaller percentage of students with IEPs. So that when you're looking at that pool to then offset the demographics in your English, or the English track, it's more likely to work out that way. So I think that's why we're looking at it. I, I, and I apologize to everyone who, if there's rumors, you know, about doing lotteries with boys and girls. I, I was asking about that, because to me, we want this process ultimately to have balanced classrooms, because that's what we believe is educationally sound. We're told by legal counsel that we can't do that, we can't pick and choose, and so we're left with a lottery, and, and the hope is that we, we basically create sound educational environments for everyone.
I guess that was my question, just to wrap up, that the lottery really is playing to gain a chance of numbers versus guarantee that they're going to meet the pool outlined in their plan.
And in our presentation, we said, it's moving towards, it's increasing the number. Again, we went to legal counsel, and we can't create a weighted lottery, but increasing the number of students in the English program. And one of the speakers asked why we have to have two English classes at every school. Again, we have Again, we have a COTAT and an English class at the Tucker and the Glover, and for inclusion opportunities at the Cunningham School. And keep in mind that new students who move into the district from first through fifth grade go into the English program. So, we have to have classrooms and options in the English program so that when these children move in, we have classrooms. So, the system is really, to flourish, to have optimal situations, needs two English at every school. I think one speaker spoke about moving teachers, and again, we talked about organizational stability. And any Cunningham parents who are in the audience know that in the English program, that's what's happened. If you have one English first grade, then you have transitions of teachers moving to second and third. And these teachers have done this, and they've done it well. The optimum situation in English and French is to create a team of teachers, to have them share, work together. And again, this isn't a lifelong commitment. Teachers change grade levels, but the optimum situation is not to have that fluctuation every year. A parent asked about surveying current kindergarten parents. We usually have our information nights in February, and again, we have feedback over the years. I was the principal of the Cunningham when the French immersion began, and we've spent a lot of time on when people make these decisions. And I would ask people to give their children a half a year in kindergarten, to talk to their kindergarten teacher, to check their child's learning styles, to meet with the kindergarten teachers, so that that's why we really wait till February, to have those information nights, and to, again, ask what family's interest is. To the family whom, to the speaker who spoke to the STEM last year at the end of the year when we realized about the 66 percent, and we looked at all of our programs, and we, again, spent time last May and June looking into the STEM program, what was the feasibility of us piloting this year, implementing. It was really in May and June, and our efforts have really been into, would that be a full implementation in first grade? We met with the leadership team today about deciding how we roll it up through the grade levels. So, again, it was a pilot during these first two months. We've put our efforts into getting it successfully beginning, and we will communicate better to the public about the STEM program. And again, we spoke to our legal counsel and to any issues about weighted lotteries. The lottery will be as public as possible, and we cannot do a weighted lottery. But increasing the number of students so that there isn't one English class at the Cunningham that now has to be integrated into the Collicott, so the Cunningham doesn't really have an English program. And so, we, again, I bring you back to the beginning of the evening when I explained that we have two programs there where children with special needs need to be integrated in first and second grade. And again, I appreciate the idea about the role models in French, but for these children at the Cunningham School, they can't be integrated into a French program at first and second grade. Their inclusion has to be into English classes.
First, Mr. Pavil, let me thank you for talking to us tonight about the English requirements. I think it's definitely an eye-opener, especially for somebody like me that doesn't have, right now, a child with additional education needs. And so, I thought it was important, and I'm glad to know that we're not going to abolish, as some people have asked, about abolishing the English program. So, thank you. I also like to say I'm a Collicott parent, and I will say, and I'll ask for forgiveness later from the PTO, that no, we do not want to be one class, one school with Cunningham. So, but really, I've come here tonight to ask the school committee to preserve the French immersion program and sustain all programs by giving the administration the ability to institute a cap in lottery as necessary. The ability to institute a cap allows the French program to remain in place as a viable choice for parents. Taking a vote on the decision allows me the ability to know that I have a choice, although not guaranteed, that only one other school in the state has to offer French or to choose French. My fear is if the cap in lottery is not implemented, the COTAC program will not have enough students to provide role models to balance out that program that is required under state and federal laws, and as we learned tonight, what is morally obligated. Selfishly, I do not want the result of not balancing these classrooms to be an eventual elimination of the French immersion program, because the school committee and the administration can't decide on a cap. I want, I want balanced programs and classes to sustain all programs with the most highly-qualified and committed teachers on, for both the English and French strand as well as the COTAC program. I want this vote, I want you to, I want you via this vote to send a message to the dedicated, high-performing teachers in all programs that the school committee and administration are acting in a responsible manner, and to manage class sizes and student assignments so that they too feel good about the school system that they chose to work in. With that, unlike many others here tonight, I believe that the cap should be implemented without strings. My chance should be no greater because I have a child already enrolled in the program or in the school system and in the French strand than someone who has just bought a house or has a child coming in first to the school system. We, as parents, we do, we have an obligation to our own kids. And although, in theory, I would love to be the first in line to make that decision and then let others decide after me, but it's just not right, and it's just not fair. And that's a good enough reason for me. The school system has an obligation to teach English, French, sibling or not. Many have spoken about the devastation that they would feel if all their children could not participate in the French immersion program, and I ask, what would happen if you had no choice due to the school system not taking care of its most vulnerable students? And as a result, the system was sued and the French immersion program eliminated. Some may call me an alarmist. I'm trying to think realistically. Lastly, this vote needs to happen to allow parents the opportunity to move ahead and make choices for their own children. Making the decision is also crucial to move the town beyond this issue. There's a lot of misinformation and opinion that residents are taking as fact and that divide this town. And although I feel that the dialogue, most of the time, and as people have said, has been thoughtful and respectful, there has been some very disturbing comments from people. You have the ability to change the conversation via your vote tomorrow night. You have, you, this vote allows you to value the French immersion, the English, and the COTAC program, enough to make tough decisions that will sustain programs by maintaining mandated resources that programs need to operate effectively. I am neither a French or on the English side. I support a strong school system overall that strives to educate all children. I have publicly voiced my concern about balancing the strands, and ultimately, I am on the side of my own children that have enrolled in both the French and English strands, and I am advocating to strengthen all three programs for my preschooler who has not yet entered the school system. Thank you for your service.
Sorry, we didn't get your name, ma'am. Thank you. Did you sign it? Thank you. You just didn't read. Thank you.
We're all talking about having solutions. My name is Bill McDonough. I'm a longtime Milton resident, I'm K through 12. You're looking for solutions to problems, and you mentioned earlier about volunteerism. Why can't it be asked to some of the parents if they wanted to be able to volunteer to move to a different school district, but instead of being in their home district? I have one child, I'm only going to have one child, I'm never having another child, okay? I don't have to worry about that. There are other parents out there like me that would volunteer to drive their kid across school in order to get into the French program. That's all I wanted to suggest. That's all I wanted to suggest.
Hi. My name is Carol Seidman. I spoke before, so this will be very quick. I just have a few questions that you can either answer now or later, really. I know the hour's late. One, where's the number 26 for the French program come from? And that's a lot of kids. One class all trying to learn French at the same time. Just was wondering where that came from. Also, I encourage people to not use the word "regular education." It's really general education, so we can avoid feeling like our kids are irregular, you know? What's the opposite of regular? Irregular. I also, I'm sorry, I lost my screen, so I closed. I had a few notes. But anyway, one of the things that the very passionate woman came up before and talked about the French program and the gift that she really wanted to give her daughter or her other children, I'm sorry, I don't remember which, but I just want to say, in all fairness, that to say that there hasn't been a tenor of negativity around this issue is to not be authentic. There's a page-long support of the French cap, but it is in the Milton Times called "Save French Immersion." And it is signed, not by any individual person, but by the Concerned Parents for French Immersion. So, it just seems to me that that's, feels very funny to me. It feels not willing to put your butt on the line and say who you are and why you believe what you believe. And this is why the kids, the parents with kids who are, who use IEPs as a way to succeed or 504 plans get upset. Also, just for the record, there is no law to have a PTO, but there is a law to have a PAC. A Parents Advisory Committee is required by law, state law and federal law, and the education of those children are mandated by law. So, and so you have to think about that when you're making decisions. There really are laws that mandate what the school needs to do. Now, you don't need to have an immersion, you don't need to have a COTAT, which is another thing people don't realize. There's no guaranteed programming. So, you could do programming that doesn't look like a COTAT program. You could do a different kind of programming. Your obligation is to educate each and every child and put them in a program that's fair and appropriate according to the law. And that is a hard pill to swallow for some people. And the last thing I'm going to say is, I totally understand people's desire to be in the French program and the gift that it is, and what loss that child might have. I can tell you, the loss of services for a disabled child is huge, and you will be paying for those disabled children in post-high school situations for the rest of their lives if they don't get intervened early. And every study that says, says, "early, early, early," and you will have success, many, many, many more successful children than later, later, later. And it's a real problem, because there are not enough resources being devoted to service those children. And there's a lot of parents paying out of pocket, hiding their kid's disability, doing all the stuff behind the scenes so that they don't quote-unquote "meet the numbers of the IEP." There's also the 504 plans that haven't been mentioned at all so far. So, I go on and on, but I have to respond to that. It is a law. The town has certain obligations, whether you'd like it or not.
Hi. I'm Christine Fisk, 14 Rockabye Road. I didn't intend to speak tonight, but I'm speaking because I was moved by hearing both sides, actually. I'm really impressed by the role model situation that's implemented here. I think it's a wonderful program. I was especially touched by the woman who spoke about her daughter and the other girl on the playground, and that connection that they have, and it actually made me feel like my daughter being in the French immersion program in second grade right now misses that opportunity. And I have a kindergartner and I have a six-month-old, so I hope for the future that they'll be able to go into the French immersion program, not because I don't want English, but because I want them to have all the benefits of learning another language from an early age. I have friends in other cities who rave, can, are just in awe of a public school system having such a wonderful French immersion program. Good friend lives in Providence and pays a lot of money to send her daughter to a French immersion, French immersion private school. So, I feel extremely blessed to have the option to enroll my children in French immersion, and I just don't want to lose that. And I just want to urge you to, I urge to consider, you to consider the option of other creative solutions, potentially ones that even involve some type of integration with the students who are in French immersion, with the students who are in the COTAC classrooms, so that there is not this elitist mentality. And I can see how it could be fostered, and I know that it has been, and it really hurts me to feel that that's divided this town. And one of my concerns is, is we come to a quick conclusion, voting on this tomorrow night, there are a lot of people with very strong opinions, and I'm concerned that that divide will even grow even stronger, and there will be that divide in this town, and that would be extremely disappointing, not only for all of us, but for our children to grow up in that environment.
Hi. My name's Hillary Farber. I live at 9 Columbia Park. The last time I was in this auditorium was the spring when I came to see the film about the French immersion program. And I came with my kids, and my son sat proudly and watched himself in this film, and his younger sister sat at the edge of her seat and admired this program and thought and saw herself as someone who potentially was going to be able to participate in this program, and it was very exciting for both of them. Fast forward to tonight, here we are, it's the middle of October, and plenty of people have never heard of a STEM program. Kindergarten families have no idea that you've rolled out this plan. There's no promotion of the very means by which you were hoping to build up an alternative to try to decrease the numbers in the French immersion program. And it really concerns me that there isn't an effort, an alternative being made to, an alternative means to try, to try to educate people around the options that exist, that unless you came to this meeting tonight, or you happened to be tooling around on the Milton Public School website, that you would have known about this program. I mean, there really should be an effort to educate the parents at parent night, but that opportunity's passed, and we're soon upon kindergarten families having to make an election. My point is, we can do a lot better than what is currently in front of us. This is not a creative plan. It's not a plan that is really directly targeting what you've identified and what I think so many of us have, and is a real problem that has to be dealt with. And third, this program denies the commitment and the investment that families have made who've chosen the French immersion program by choosing not to recognize any kind of grandfathering in of those children. And I would encourage the school committee members, number one, to say, I have been coming to these meetings, these school committee meetings, since the spring, and night, and time after time, I have heard fabulous ideas and suggestions from intelligent, thoughtful parents in the room. And I don't know how many of those ideas were vetted by the committee and by Superintendent Gormly and her staff in trying to develop the plan that we've all become, you know, familiar with. But it seems to me that due to the outpouring of concern and interest in this program, that it behooves us not to create a working committee of community members who want to participate and try to develop some of these creative solutions so that we can avoid what so many of us are concerned is going to be really kind of cataclysmic, and maybe could have been avoided if we had tried to promote the other wonderful opportunities that exist, and just educate people overall about what is out there. So, I think, number one... So I think, number one, the school committee owes it to the community to put the brakes on and say, "Let's go back to the drawing board with this and see if we can do better and have more voices from the community in on some of the more contentious issues." Number two, in terms of the sibling preference, let me just say, and here I do have a particular self-interest, as I indicated, I have a daughter who's in kindergarten, a son who's in the French immersion program in second grade now. But really, by and large, what the sibling, what grandfathering these kids who are, who have siblings that are currently in the program is, is it is merely a way of you phasing in the cap. So if the committee decides that a cap is necessary, then I would say, vote on that issue and then come back on the issue of how to implement this cap. But it is really just a phasing in. I was at a school committee meeting where I heard a couple of members of the committee say, "Well, it's really unclear where you would draw the line." I don't think it's unclear at all. I think if there's a sibling who's currently in the French immersion program at an elementary school, and there is a sibling who is going to be entering, who's not yet in the program, that that person, that sibling or siblings should get a priority in the lottery. I think that recognizes the investment, and furthermore, I think it, to not provide that, devalues what families have been, how difficult it has been for families whose first child, second child is in the program to have acclimated themselves to a really steep learning curve, particularly for parents who don't speak French. My son will be the only person in the house who can really be helpful in helping my daughter with her homework. Furthermore, the, it's not complicated to figure out where to draw the line. It's the fair and right thing to do. Over time, it's a way of phasing in the cap, if that's what you insist needs to happen here. Over time, those numbers will reduce. So I hear you, Mr. Phelan, that there are, you know, there would only be seven seats left at Tucker for children without siblings, and maybe the year after that, it might be the same number, or it might be a little lower. But time, over time, those numbers were spread out. People will be on notice. This is Milton. This is the cap. This is how it's instituted. We can't have the same expectations that people who came before us did, and that's the fair and just thing to do. Last point, you had an expert come and testify, you had an expert come and testify on the quality of the two programs, Dr. O'Dwyer. I would urge you, implore you, to consider having an expert come and talk about the value of, for siblings to share in this experience. I think that we're, we're not aware sufficiently of the way that the learning happens in a French immersion program and the value that it serves inside intra-family. And I think that you owe it to yourselves and to the community to have experts talk about that, because it seems as though denying a grandfathering in of these children is not appreciating what I suspect is a very important educational piece of what it means to be in an immersion program. That if, that other children, I mean, my daughter's learning some French by, you know, vicariously because her brother's in a French immersion program. You know, somebody spoke to the Gaffi books, et cetera, et cetera. You know, all the, all the books on tape and all the songs that we sing in the car while we're driving around in French. Let somebody educate us a little bit more about whether there's really intrinsic value in the benefit of grandfathering these kids in before you decide, sort of suis ponte, that we shouldn't do that at all. Let's hear if, in fact, pedagogically, there's value in that. If there is, then perhaps that will go a further distance to encouraging you to consider the grandfathering in. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Maria Karimakis from 16 Foster Lane. Just bear with me, I've got a bit of laryngitis. I first want to thank the administration and the school committee for all of their hard work focusing on this issue. I believe the process that the school committee and the administration went through over the spring and summer has educated parents and makes this capping decision an easy one. Let's review. A cap or lottery system is how most, if not all, public school systems administer immersion programs. It is not controversial, but a necessary tool for school administrators to manage enrollment, class sizes, teachers, class demographics, and budgets. The one other French immersion program in Massachusetts, Holliston, uses a cap lottery system. The only thing wrong with the English program is the French program, meaning the impact that it's had on the demographics. The English program teachers are outstanding. The curriculum is challenging. The facility's the very same as the French program. As we have heard from the administration, decreased enrollment in the English program has created single strands in schools, limited options for inclusion programs, limited the pool of role models for CO-TOD programs, limited the flexibility of classroom assignment. Fluctuation in program enrollments has resulted in an imbalance of student demographic representation in both programs, and fluctuation in program enrollments has resulted in organizational instability. The impact of the recent enrollment trends has limited the district's ability to provide an optimal learning environment for all students. This is unacceptable. Again, it's not the teachers or the curriculum, but the imbalance between programs that creates the suboptimal learning environment. I think what the superintendent has recommended is reasonable. 14 first-grade classrooms, six of which will be French, eight English. If there are 300 incoming first graders and the max 26 choose French, that equates to 52% French, 48% English. I think that's entirely reasonable and consistent historically, except for the past couple of years. Finally, the creation of STEM curriculum and better marketing of the English program will hopefully reduce the need for an annual lottery, but a cap needs to be in place to address those issues. Thank you.
Nikki Bradshaw, 127 Craig Street. Good evening, and I promise to be brief, but first, a quick story. Years ago, my parents made a decision to have me receive my education in a district 45 minutes from my home community. I entered the program as a first grader and remained in the district until graduation. This educational arrangement sought to eliminate racial imbalance in the sending district and to help alleviate racial isolation in the receiving district. For the adult community, this was called desegregation or voluntary busing. For a first grader, it was a long bus ride to an unfamiliar environment. While I can still remember the names of most of my elementary school teachers, I will never forget Principal Thomas A. Scott. Principal Scott was an exceptional leader because he treated me with respect and compassion when others did not. He communicated high expectations and then provided the support in order for me to reach those expectations. He set a tone for the entire school district and entire school community that every student was a human being who had a fundamental right to be part of that school community. He created and maintained a place for me to belong. He believed and communicated by his actions that every student, regardless of their differences or unique abilities, was a valued member of that school community with the fundamental right to an education. His exceptional leadership conveyed the idea that everyone, regardless of the color of their skin, their place of birth, where they lived, or the amount of money they had in their pocket, had potential. Principal Scott taught me a valuable lesson about leadership. Exceptional leadership requires exceptional character in the face of adversity, opposition, and struggle. Today, I am a proud parent of a first grader, a member of the Milton PAC, and a member of the Milton Public School community. As leaders and as members of the school committee, you already know that all of our elementary schools in both the English and the French immersion programs are filled with highly skilled, extremely dedicated professionals. You know that these amazing educators, specialists, therapists, and support staff in both programs are being led by experienced school administrators who are committed to their families and students whom they serve. Each of these schools are filled with students whose parents or guardians are invested in their educational process and maintain high expectation for their children. You also know the Milton Public School system must create and maintain optimal learning environments in each of these schools in order to comply with IDEA's definition of a free, appropriate, public education in the least restricted environment. I know that you already know this, and you've seen the data, and you've analyzed the data, and you've shared the data with us, and you've been sharing it for a while. So I stand here today grateful that in spite of all that is exceptional about our school systems, you are willing to identify and address the problems which do exist. I'm just here to remind you, on behalf of my daughter, that exceptional leadership requires exceptional character in the face of adversity, opposition, and struggle. There is a window of opportunity before you, and I ask that you vote accordingly and that you support the cap. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Baldwin. I live at 39 Winthrop Street. And as you heard from my daughter, we did move to the school district because of the outstanding education. This wasn't based on French or English, and we've had nothing but a good experience at our school. Tucker is amazing. You should be very proud of the educators there and of the community as a whole. They're very integrated. I don't see a separation between French and English. I have one child in French and one child in English, and it has worked out very well for our family. When we moved here, we gave our daughter the choice to either repeat first grade in the French program or to go on to second grade. I don't know how many kids would do this. She made the choice to not be bored anymore, Mama, and go into French because she wanted to learn something in school and not sit there and learn, as you heard her say, her "ah, ah, ah, buh, buh, buh" for months on end. So I just, my other daughter has had an IEP. And if there's one thing that parents who've watched their children struggle with physical or educational issues knows, it's that you never want to limit the choices that you give your children. And I feel that this cap would really limit the choices that our children are allowed to explore for themselves. And if you've ever watched on television or been part of a lottery system where you get to watch the faces of these kids when they aren't chosen, it's heartbreaking and disappointing a child when they're starting their education, knowing they're not going to get another chance. It's not another semester where the class was full that semester and they get to get in the next semester. Just wait and be patient. Starting them out that way with that kind of disappointment, they need to be excited to learn in order to be truly successful. And I ask that you delay or at least don't put the cap in place. Thank you.
Good evening. I'll be, I'll be very brief. I know it's getting late. My name is Peter Filoni. I live at 27 Long Meadow Road. I've got three children. My oldest is in kindergarten right now at Cunningham, so we're staring down the barrel of quite a few decisions we have to make over the course of the next 12 months. I understand that French is not for everybody, so I want to say that first and foremost. But for those of us that are supporting the French program, I'd like to speak briefly on a very practical level to say that I see this cap as creating a potentially resentful environment, not only within the Milton Public School System community for those that want French, but I see that the cap, or more importantly, will create issues within families. And a very practical example, which somebody gave earlier, and I just want to echo it again, is if one sibling does get into French and the other does not, you know, what do we tell our kids at the dinner table as to why they cannot be involved in the French program? How do we handle jealousy issues? How do we handle sadness issues? And again, just to think on a very practical level, these are very real issues that we're going to have to face. It also seems somewhat cruel to me to have families go through this every spring, year after year after year, if you've got multiple siblings, if you've got multiple kids. There'll be a lot of anticipation, and ultimately, there'll be some sadness and there'll be some happiness, and juggling that year after year seems to be something that I will not look forward to as a parent. And lastly, maybe I missed it, but if, if in fact, you do market the STEM program over the course of the next six to 12 months, let's say the next several months, is there a chance that you will not need to cap the French immersion program in the fall if you take a poll in the spring and enough parents decide that they want to move over to the English program from the French program? Be interesting to hear the answer to that. Thank you very much for your time.
Hi, my name is Matthew King. I live at 35 Revere Street, and I will also try to be brief because I feel like I'm reiterating some points that have already been made, but I want to add a little color to them. First, I think there's really two, it's important to remember, there's two halves to how we're going to be limiting access to the French program. There's the front-loaded half to set a firewall or a low, a, make sure there's a base for the French program. And then there's the cap, which is, there's a maximum number of seats for the, for the French program itself, a base for the English, a cap for the French. I would submit that those two don't have to be linked. There might be budgetary reasons or some other reasons why you might want to cap, cap the French side, but that's sort of a discussion that we haven't been discussing. And if that's part of it, then we should discuss it, but they don't have to go together. The other thing I wanted to talk about is sibling preference. I'm the father of four daughters. My oldest is in second grade French. I have a kindergartner at the Glover. They're all girls, and not that that makes big difference, but, you know, siblings of the same sex, I, as far as I know, you know, there's some expectations. My daughter, who's a kindergartner, has never known anything other than the French program. That, to her, is what school is. Do I think she'd be fine if she didn't get into the French program? Probably. I certainly hope so. I would, you know, do my best. She's heard us talking about it. We've already, you know, discussed that this is what the discussion around town is, and, you know, I think she'll be fine. Do I know that all kids in this situation will be fine? I don't know. The one little, you know, story from just the other day, you know, she was, she was doing some folders, and she asked me, "How do you spell Gafi?" And I said, "Well, you know, G-A-F-I. Why?" She's like, "Oh, I'm making my Gafi folder for next year when I'm in the French program." So she does have expectations. The French program was advertised, or the Milton advertisement to parents was that it was choice for the family. There was just, there was, you know, back and forth about homeschool and, you know, whether you'd have to move the kids around, but there was always an expectation that it was a family. If we had to start our family program again, we might make a different decision, and parents coming in after a cap is implemented will be able to make that decision. We can't make that decision. We can't take our oldest daughter out of French because that wouldn't be fair to her. I would, I don't know what to say if my twins that are coming behind her, you know, obviously they don't have expectations of what their language is going to be, but, you know, if we're giving, you know, the mix, that's all I wanted to say. And then the last part, I believe, you know, most, most immersion programs that I've found looking around do have caps. I totally agree with that. There's one in Canada that I found that didn't, but that's Canada. But almost all of them that I did find do have sibling preference, some of which are based on schools, but some of which are not based on schools. So there, there does seem to be some precedence for this, and I agree with my good friend and neighbor that, you know, we should look into the pedagogical background behind whether or not it makes sense or whether there's harm in not giving it the preference. Thank you.
Can I just follow up on one point you made? Under the close system, is twin daughters potentially be separated?
I have to tell you, in the spirit of being completely honest, and I have been honest and told you every aspect of this, with the twins and triplets, we didn't make a decision.
Could I just add one thing, since I am an interested party on this? From looking around also, I found, at least the Montgomery School System in Maryland, their, their policy for their, for their lottery is that the twins enter, the multiple, the multiple-birth siblings enter as a unit, so they're one vote in the lottery. I think, I know that in Massachusetts state law, there's law that the parents get to choose whether their kids go together or separate for, for multiple-birth children. And so I think there is, you know, as, as a parent, I think I'd want them in the same lottery, not separate, because I don't know how I would deal with that.
We talked to our attorney. Again, we haven't made a decision about twins and triplets, and our attorney advised that the children could be together in English, but no decision's been made on twins or triplets.
I'm Terry McNeil. I live at 21 Coolidge Road. I'm a father of twins, so I'll take that question off the, off the books. I'm also an attorney, so I'll start researching whether or not they have some vested right I was unaware of. That's good to know. out, who lives in Artwell, which is that I think tonight we do have a lot to be proud of. I know I've heard a lot from every side, and I think the concern that I have isn't so much that I'm currently against the cap, it's that this is the first opportunity we've had to talk about it, and you're voting on it tomorrow unless you decide otherwise. And that's my real issue. I see Gary sitting next to me here. I'm in awe of what he said and what he and his wife, the experience they have through their children, and he was able to share that with us, and people who have siblings are able to share that, but no one was able to share that until tonight, and no one shared that before the proposal came out. And two years ago, the committee and the administration dedicated time and effort and resources to this 2010 World Language Committee report, which evaluated so many different options and expressly rejected a cap. At this point, I'm learning why you rejected it, and you're building a pretty good case, but you haven't convinced us and you haven't engaged us, and I really just think if you delay your vote and do that, it will be, it'll go miles to getting support within the community. And even if at the end of the day you decide to do a cap, you will have changed the hearts and minds of plenty of people in this community who, until tonight, were starting to get a little angry with each other, and I think this has been great, and I think you build on this momentum and don't cut it short, and that's my primary concern.
Hi, I'm Carrie McQ, eighteen St. Mary's Road. I'm actually really kind of shocked with the brush that the French immersion parents have been painted with, and I feel like it's important, just a brief comment on it. We've been called a lot of names. We've entitled. We think we're better. We hate English. We're against the kids who have special needs. We think we're more important. I think somebody was called a Nazi at one point. I was told I was hiding and unwilling to share my identity on the website, and I think it's incredibly sad that we've gotten to this point because every single parent I've spoken to, and I can tell you, over the last two weeks, I have met more Milton parents, not a single person hasn't cared about the special needs children. What I've heard more parents talk about is, "It's so interesting. I didn't have all that information. What can we do about it? How do we make it better? God, if my child was asked to be a role model, would that be something I'd be interested in?" The conversations we've had are incredibly inclusive because we've learned a lot about it. I think that you have about, I don't know, fifty parents still in the room at almost, is it almost eleven o'clock at night? There's a lot of passion and incredible amount of intelligence, and I want to harness it and make it powerful for the Milton community, and I feel like if you vote tomorrow unanimously for the cap, that what we're going to create is a lot of animosity. We're going to create winners and losers, and I don't think it's necessary. I think if we come together, we really do have a lot of parents who want to create a solution that works for all children. I absolutely only am interested in creating a solution that works for everybody, but I just don't think we've exhausted it. I don't think we've been creative. I think Milton is incredibly special. I am so proud to be a part of this town. I am so proud to be in a public school, not a private school, a public school, that any child can participate in French immersion. I can't tell you how proud I am of telling people that. I want to be proud that we also find a solution that no other town could find. We're talking about maybe eighteen or twenty kids. Let's not put a cap on it at this point. Let's wait. Let's find out how many kids we're actually talking about. Let's try to find a solution. I really think we can. It's eighteen or twenty kids. I think we can. Jerry, I've learned an incredible amount from some of your posts. I think that if we work together, we really can find a solution. I'm not against your child. I know you also are a French immersion parent, and I think we can come together and find a solution, and that's all I think we're asking for. I'm not saying French immersion or bust. I'm not saying we all should have it, and I'm actually not even up here arguing for my own kid. I think that there are, I was thinking about what to talk about, and I thought, well, should I talk about Tucker, and should I talk about the fact that I lost my first lottery, so therefore I should get this one? And at the end of the day, I think most of the parents we're interacting with are talking about how do we fix this solution for the town and continue to be really special? So, thank you.
Jerry Viti, fifteen Longwood Road. You've heard from me before. I just want to salute the school committee and the administration. I think much of this conversation has taken place before. It's taken place in open forums, and folks who may be new to the issue, because it's immediate, don't realize all the work that's been done and the options that have been considered. At the last school committee meeting, where it was very widely publicized that the PAC, the cap presentation was to be given, two parents showed up to argue against the cap. I spoke for three minutes for a cap solution. The cap was presented, and no one showed up for citizen speak afterwards, and everyone knew what the presentation was from watching it on TV. It went around like wildfire. So I think because it's new to folks or it's immediate doesn't mean that this process hasn't been happening for a long time, and you haven't listened to a lot of input. Finally, I hope we can all work together, especially after the vote, because there's a lot of healing to do. I would like to state again that not every kid can access French immersion or English on a grade-appropriate level or grade level that would be typical. My daughter certainly, she certainly can't, and I would kill for the option, or if she was able to access either an excellent English program or the excellent French program that we have in this town. And if my biggest concern was that I'd have to tell one of her siblings that she was going to be, and I don't mean to diminish this, but if one of my big concerns was to have to tell her sibling that she was in another program, I wouldn't have a care in the world. Thank you.
Hi, how are you? My name is Leila Mitchell. I'm at one oh six Emerson Road. I'm glad the audience has died down because I'm a little nervous. I'm going to pretend the camera's not there with all of Milton looking. Trying to figure out sort of what we're discussing here and trying to make it clear in my head and came up with sort of three themes that maybe we've all been discussing and for you to think about as you're making your decision, whether it's delayed or tomorrow. Keeping it to three is it's a triad. Hopefully, it's a magic number. We can make some magic tonight. One being community, two being communication, and three being contrast. The first being community, that I think that we've sort of all made it known that we are Milton community, and I'd kind of like to break that down a little bit further in that we're more of a family. I don't have a lot of blood relatives around the area, for a few states away, so some people in this audience I consider my family. Their children are like my nieces and nephews. So I'd like for us to sort of think about that. If there are nieces and nephews or sisters and brothers that are hurting, we need to come together and figure out a good solution to help them. I feel like the decision is a little bit of a Band-Aid to help them and not necessarily thinking of a really creative overall solution. So that's community. Second theme is communication. I'm learning a lot about the STEM English teaching. I'm not even sure if I'm understanding some of the terminology that I'm learning tonight. I think there needs to be a little bit of a PR push in terms of that program. I actually am really concerned. I have three kids. One is currently in third grade in the French program. He was in the lottery a couple of years ago and did not get his homeschool. I had the choice of choosing English or French. I chose a non-homeschool for the French program. As some of you may know, it has been a struggle. Logistically, I have two other children, straddling that concern, as well as an emotional separation from his homeschool. But again, I have created another family at another school that I call a homeschool that can be created that way. But I think communication, so I have two others coming up, and I think it's very interesting, these other strands that I haven't really known about. What is important in the English program? What is this STEM program? What is this co-teaching program about? I think there are some really great opportunities that maybe my two young ones could possibly participate in, and I'd like to make that choice for them and with them, whether or not they're going to the French program or whether they can do this fantastic English program that I'd like to hear more about. So again, second theme, communication. And lastly, the third theme is about contrast. I think that the solution that you are voting on tomorrow is actually not necessarily strengthening the first C-word, which is community, but actually strengthening the divide between us. And unfortunately, I think that, let's be honest, putting a lottery system on something where there is this feeling or perception that there is a win or a loss, it actually strengthens the divide. It does not strengthen the community. So I don't know if that's quite the solution, and I think that's causing a contrast instead. So I'd like to really round up and think, what is that fourth word that we can think of? And it's that C, that creative solution. And I think that there's a little bit more to it than just saying, all right, this is kind of an easy fix, and this will help us for next year, but let's dig deeper, is what I'm asking.
We are approaching eleven o'clock. We have one here and one over here, and I think that's going to be it because we are approaching eleven o'clock.
My name is Jay Rooney, and I live at eighty-five Old Farm Road in Milton, and I'd actually like to add a fifth C to my predecessor's plan, and that's compromise. And my question for the committee is, are you willing to take some of the ideas you heard tonight and tweak the plan or maybe compromise with some of the concerns you have, or is it clearly just a black and white, yes or no, answer you're going to make tomorrow night? Thank you.
Back for seconds, Attila Geranolo from two Elliott Circle. As I mentioned earlier, I came here worried, and I am now worried and hopeful. I'm worried about the vote, obviously, but I am hopeful for, I have noticed even for a brief moment, that your hearts are not altogether set on a vote yet, that if you have not arrived at a conclusion, what you're going to do with twins and triplets, that says something. That says something, and I'm hoping that you will heed what it says, that the siblings, twins, it's all in the same dynamic buildup. So I'm hoping you will consider either delaying a vote or voting no, and think about how you would solve the twin triplet solution, just as well as the sibling solution. Thank you.
Anything you want to say before this?
I want to thank those, everyone who came tonight, those who were viewing, and those who stayed with us tonight. Again, the most important thing in your lives are your children and your families, and so that's why I choose to work in the town that I live and work with you. And again, our goal is to sustain and to have an English program, a French immersion program, and a co-taught program that can flourish in this town for years to come, to sustain those programs, and on behalf of myself, do you have no better advocate, no louder advocate? And again, we have to find a way to move forward, to have all of the programs flourish, and our goal is to communicate with you, to have you fully informed, and to provide your children with the strongest education we possibly can.
And I want to thank you all for coming tonight. It's been a long night, and especially for people who set it up. I can't imagine what it would be like to watch this on TV.
The sister's a debate.
But I really want to thank you. You've been very informative. You've been very helpful. People have been taking copious notes up here, and your statements have not gotten unheard. We have to work through this. I mean, this is not an easy situation, as people noticed, have noted throughout this. There's a lot of work to be done here. We have issues we have to deal with, and as a community, we will find a way to do this.
How will we know if you proceeded with the vote tomorrow?
Our agenda tomorrow night has this discussion on it. If, it's Robert's rules, if a member calls for a vote, they call for a vote. If they don't call for a vote, they don't call for a vote. I can't tell you we are going to do this or that because I don't speak for six people. I think what we've done in the past is we've discussed things, debated things. If we feel ready to vote, we will. If we don't, we won't. I mean, that's all I can say because that's not within my purview to drive that. So I think we will discuss tomorrow night. We have not had a chance to discuss any of this tonight. Obviously, you've been watching us. We've been listening to you. We are not going to discuss it between now and then because that would be a violation of the open meeting law, and we're not going to do that. So I mean, our first opportunity to react to, as a group, to everything that's been said tonight is not until tomorrow night, and that's all I can say, really. We will discuss it. Thank you all for coming. Good night. [applause][1793.11]